Great, thanks, Brian. Good evening, everyone. I guess we'll call to order our, first we'll begin with our planning board meeting here of June 3, 2025, here at 5:01 PM. For members, folks who are joining us in the gallery or online, we have a planning board meeting tonight. We have our committee of the whole council meeting, and we have a special council meeting. I'm anticipating we'll be able to proceed with those in order. So we begin with our planning board. So I'll call for a motion from a member of the planning board to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Councillor Adams, second, Councillor Duran, I think I saw you move. All members of the planning board in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, changes, revisions? Hearing none, we'll proceed. Begin each one of our meetings here at the City of Summerside by acknowledging that the land upon which we're gathered is unceded Mi'kmaq territory. Abogee is covered by the historic Treaties of Peace and Friendship, and we pay respects to the Indigenous Mi'kmaq people who have occupied this island for over 12,000 years. At this point, I'll call on any member of the planning board or member of council who is sitting in on the planning board meeting to declare conflict of interest with respect to any of the items on the planning board agenda here this evening. Seeing and hearing none, I'll hand it over to Chair of the Planning Board for Item 5, Councillor Duran.
Okay, thank you, your worship. We will begin things by reviewing a application for a mobile sales establishment for 272 all-weather highway. Supporting explanation, the purpose of the application is to allow a mobile sales establishment, frying beaver, yes, you heard me correctly, to operate a 272 all-weather highway. Background, the city has received an application from John McKinnon requesting approval to allow a mobile sales establishment, frying beaver, to operate a 272 all-weather highway, PID number 1081520, weather permitting. The proposed hours of operation are 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Sunday. Mobile sales establishment means a business located in a motorized vehicle or movable structure that is towed or moved by a motorized vehicle, and where all of the goods, wares, or foodstuffs that are offered for sale are contained entirely within the motorized vehicle or movable structure, but does not include a lunch truck. The report, under Section 3 of the City of Summerside Licensing Bylaw, CS21, that bylaw states the following. In Part 13, Mobile Sales Establishment License, A, any person or company seeking a license to operate a mobile sales establishment in the city shall make application therefore to council. B, licenses may be granted for a mobile sales establishment to conduct business on a maximum of two locations in the city, and each application shall be accompanied by a letter of permission from the owner or owners of the property on which the mobile sales establishment will be located. C, council shall allow or refuse the application based upon considerations of safety, desirability, impact on established businesses in the city, public convenience, and such other considerations as it deems appropriate. D, council may attach terms and conditions to the approval of the license if granted, including but not limited to hours and days of operation, health code requirements, litter control, or approved locations. E, the license for a mobile sales establishment shall be valid for the calendar year in which the application is made only. A new application is required to council for each calendar year. And F, no appeal shall lie from a decision of council respecting a mobile sales establishment license. And staff comments, Mr. McKinnon has obtained a written letter of permission from the property owner, Highcroft Farms, Inc., also known as Compton's Farm Market. The placement of the mobile sales establishment does not impact the required parking for the retail store. And the recommendation, staff support the city granting a mobile sales establishment license to the applicant, John McKinnon, as this property is zoned agricultural with a restricted use approval for the existing retail store. The planning board recommendation, whether carried or defeated, will be brought forward for council for a final decision. And planning board recommendation, the application from John McKinnon to allow a mobile sales establishment, frying beaver, to operate a 272 all-weather highway be recommended to be approved by council. Moved by myself, and I would ask for a second from the planning board. Councillor Adams. Any questions or comments? If not, we will, yeah, Councillor Adams.
So is this, will this be the second one in that location?
Yes, we approved one at our last meeting as well. So there, there's two there, plus the market. So we'll move on to the planning board vote. All members of the planning board in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, so that is carried, and that will go for decision, decision of council. And back to your worship.
Yeah, thank you, Councillor Duran. So with that, we'll adjourn our planning board meeting of June 3, 2025, and I will call to order the committee of the whole meeting for the City of Summerside here at 5:06 PM. A call for a mover to approve the agenda as presented. Moved by Councillor McDougal, second. Councillor Cameron, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed, revisions, changes? Hearing none, we'll proceed with the agenda as presented. At this point, I'll call on any member of council to declare a conflict of interest declaration with respect to any item on the committee of the whole meeting. Seeing none, we'll move right along into Item 4, Committee Reports and Recommendations, starting with Finance Committee, Chair, Councillor McDougal, Chair of Finance. Councillor, you have two items on here.
Wrong button. Thank you, your worship. I do have a couple items here this evening. First one is vulnerable populations grant applications. And council approved 22,500 in the 2526 budget for grants to nonprofit, profit organizations that service our vulnerable populations. The grant aims to empower registered not-for-profit organizations and prospective applicants to address the needs for vulnerable populations, including seniors, youth, and those impacted by the high cost of living. The Finance Committee, at their latest meeting on May 22, reviewed applications received and passed a motion to recommend that council award three nonprofit organizations for $5,000 in total. This will leave budget remaining of $2,500 for 2025, 26 year. The Finance Committee recommends that the council award the following nonprofit organizations with a vulnerable population grant as follows. $2,500 to Summerside Presbyterian Church for weekly lunches for students. $1,250 to Generation XX for the Youth Meals Program. And $1,250 to Parkview Senior Club for outdoor picnics and musical experiences during the
Thank you, councillor. Yeah, so that, just so we get the process right here, so that's for discussion of committee of the whole, and then I guess we'll move to council for an approval at the upcoming council meeting.
Right.
Comments, questions from council? Hearing none, we'll move on to your next item. Oh, no, councillor.
No?
No, okay, great.
Do I move that to go to the, or does it have to be?
I think you can nod it along to our next council meeting, correct? There's no resolution?
There's no resolution.
Okay, but we still need, okay.
Okay. So the second item I have is the alternative revenue sources. Just an update, we had talked about it in our budget review this year, and so during the 2025-26 budget discussion, staff presented a number of alternative revenue sources, changed to fees to be considered by council. So upon the update from the Finance Committee meeting held on May 22 regarding the discussion of alternative revenue sources, property tax rate group for apartment buildings, four units or more, and hotels, Finance Committee asked staff to discuss further internally and develop some illustrations to bring back to a future meeting. Emergency response levy, no further work or research until other new sources of revenue, potential reduction in costs, or efficiencies in operations are considered. Non-resident rates such as recreation and cultural, culture fees. Staff were instructed to discuss challenges and opportunities, and how this could be administered, and then provide an update at a future Finance Committee meeting. The Finance Committee recommends changes to the building permit fee. This change from $3 to per $100 of construction value to $5 per $100 of construction value was agreed upon and incorporated into the 2025-26 operating budget. The council resolution will be presented at our special council meeting later today to alter the fee in Section A of the Building Bylaw, CS-31. Development fees such as parkland dedication zoning requests, the planning committee is researching these types of fees, so no further work is required by the Finance Committee at this time. And if there's any questions?
Thank you, Chair McDougal. Hand it over now to Chair McCollman, Chair of our Bylaw and Governance Committee.
Okay, thank you, your worship. I don't have a whole lot to report, other than the fact that work still continues on the vacant building bylaw. I know that Director Kendra has been doing quite a bit of work on it, and she has researched a number of cities in other areas across Canada, just to get some, some scope of what they do. And just a very quick update, I'm sure everybody received the email, on Lindsay Connolly has been, she's being introduced as a new staff member. She's going to be working in the role with Grant Proposal Specialist, or as Grant Proposal Specialist and Policy Writer. So that should be very helpful in, in getting to some of this information for council. I'm bringing it back. And our next meeting is June the 10th, Wednesday, June the 10th, at 12:30. That's it.
Thank you, Chair McCollman. Any further questions, comments, council? No, we're gonna tick right along. Chair of the Planning Board, councillor Duran.
Yeah, okay, thank you, your worship, once again. So our main focus at our planning committee has really been on the development of a complete streets policy. And just as a brief summary to anyone who really doesn't know what that is, whether it's anyone in this room or anyone listening, it basically just means that for any new developments or new streets, that we're looking at what, what will be included in, in that street, whether it's sidewalks, or parking areas, or active transportation. So we're looking at that, and what, and what we'd like to have included in any of those new developments or streets going forward. This afternoon, just before this committee of the whole meeting, we had met with staff and reviewed the, the current cross-section of a typical Summerside local street, and staff also provided three options to us that we can review and, and discuss, and decide what we'd like to include in our recommendation. So we will, we're gonna review that information and meet again as a committee at the end of June, and we'll present our, our recommendation, as well as we'll present the details of those options that, that staff gave us for, for council, so they can make a decision on whether or not to adopt one of the new options, or continue a status quo.
Awesome, thank you, Chair Duran. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll keep ticking right along. Councillor Adams, Chair of our Action Plan for Safer Communities. I know, I think we meet tomorrow. Yep.
I don't want that too much, we pushed it back just because some people weren't available, so we pushed it back, so it's tomorrow, and also we will have, our, the criminologist is going to be presenting to the group, the committee, his findings from his research, so, and then following that, that will be brought to council. Nothing more, it's done.
Thank you, councillor Adams. I'm just wondering, councillor, is there an opportunity there with the report from the criminologist from Dalhousie to share that information with all of council, either by attending or listening, or even sharing the report itself, whatever the reporting mechanism is?
Yeah, the, the full presentation and final report will be presented to council sometime this summer, and I don't have a date yet, but this is just the, the initial draft findings that we're working on tomorrow.
Great, thank you. Move to councillor Trendon. Councillor, are you there? Parks and Green Space plan?
I definitely am. I just wanna say, you guys lookin' great online, like, wow, like, I didn't know you guys looked this good every day. Woo, this is you lookin' good. All right, on a serious note, Parks and Green Space, our survey is online, and so pretty excited about this, and so I wanna give a special call out to any schools out there. So there's a contest that, let's say, schools, if you apply, the top classroom per, per school in Summerside, we get a bowling game and a swimming pass, so almost like an end of school party, so the deadline is this coming Monday, so seven days away. We have 166 surveys already collected, which is wonderful, and our plan is also to have an onsite park survey, so if you happen to be visiting some parks in the summer, you'll have a condensed version of that survey, just to make sure we can capture as much of community feedback as we can, in order, in order to develop what the future of parks should be. And the only other point is our RFP, we do plan to have it ready for the middle of June, and have that out, hopefully have an RFP and a consultant to help us shape and gauge and update our Parks and Green Space plan. Thanks, everybody.
All right, thank you, councillor Trendon. Any further questions there? Seeing none, move to councillor Cameron, Chair of, you've got two here, councillor Cameron, if you wanna do them back-to-back, I know the youth one, we're going into the summer, but hand it over to you, councillor Cameron.
Sure, I'll do both back-to-back, 'cause they're both quick. The Youth Advisory Committee has not moved, 'cause we're not really doing anything until September, when everyone's back in schools, to engage in that. And then our Smart Cities Initiative, we have been circulating some information, a meeting coming up, I think actually it's getting moved, because there's something else happening at the same time as it, so we'll reschedule that one. And we also, we're just at the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Conference, and we attended a lovely little seminar on AI while we were there, and learned lots.
Awesome, thank you, Chair Cameron, wearing two-chair hats and a councillor hat, three hats on the head. Deputy Mayor Snow, Chair of our Downtown Transformation Team.
Thank you, your worship. So just a brief update would be that council recently received overview of the committee work to date, and also the full document was shared with all of council for review. Now we're at the stage of implementation committee review and findings to bring back to council. So just a reminder, the members of that committee are myself, councillor McCollman, councillor Morrison, and councillor Duran, so we will be meeting in the coming weeks to bring back recommendations to council for implementation of the downtown transformation. So that coupled with the money we budgeted in this year's budget, we look to make some significant strides over the next little bit of time for downtown.
I just wanted to check with you, Deputy Mayor. I've had a few of the businesses in the downtown core, they're wondering since with Rose Dennis, with new employment, is there going to be somebody in that role for the downtown Summerside, or do you have any idea? Does that fit with the transformation?
I'll ask JP to clarify what he knows, but my understanding is somebody's been in the role and acting capacity for a little bit, sort of trying to fill in the blanks, and I think they're in the process of hiring, finding a replacement long-term.
Okay, no, that's good to know.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Snow, and councillor McCollman with the valuable question we are all wondering. I hand it over to Chair of our Electric Utility Governance Review, councillor Morrison.
Yeah, there's not really anything new to report. There was supposed to be a meeting last week, but between travel, and we're still waiting, I think, on some legal information from our legal team to, before we go too much further forward, so until that shows up, I guess it'll be a little slow, probably another meeting the last week in June, so maybe more information after that.
Thank you, councillor Morrison, and all of council, and all your roles. This will move into Item 5, Staff Reports and Recommendations. I have, the first one here is the Dunskey work on renewable generation, and I'm looking towards our CAO here to see if we have our presenters.
Our Dunskey group is, was told to be here for six, so they're en route to come a little earlier, so I'm wondering if we could just move to the next agenda and come back.
We'll go to the next one, yeah, we're ticking right along here tonight, that's great. We'll move to Item B, which is the no parking on McEwen Road, and this is from, following from the May committee of the whole meeting discussion, so I think this is a staff report recommendation, I'll hand it back to you, CEO DeRosier.
So essentially, we've reviewed this request from a few different angles with the chief of police, and we've come to the conclusion that we believe it's likely in the best interest of public safety to proceed with no parking on McEwen in front of the two school zones, both of Three Oaks and Athena, knowing that there's busy activity in that area during, with soccer and rugby and others, so we'll be, I believe there's a resolution on the agenda for later in tonight's meeting, but I'm available for any questions if there
Sure, we can ask questions now, yeah, councillor Adams.
So if this is to go through, we vote on it later, you said? So if it is to go through, like, I know, like, some people won't understand, but in our social media information bit, can we, like, point them to all of the parking, the tremendous amount of parking that is in both areas, just so that before, you know, a negative word starts to go around about it, we can sort of, you know, get ahead of it?
Yeah, I'll make note of that.
It's probably two of our areas that have the most parking, like, right, pretty close by.
Yep, I'll make note of that.
Thanks, JP.
Great, thank you, CEO DeRosier. That, we'll just keep moving ahead, and then once Dunskey gets in here and gets settled, if council's okay, then we'll jump back to them. We might now move into the committee of the whole discussion items, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, so we will get started. The first one, councillor McCollman, summer schedule, so councillor, open the floor to you.
It's been the mindset of what it's like in the winter, how long the winter is, and where we're in here tonight, and it's a beautiful night. So the preface of what I want to talk to council about, bring it forward, was looking at our scheduling for the month of July, June, and July. We've done in some previous councils, and it just gives that little bit of a breather for council when the summer is such a very, very short season. And, I mean, we certainly spend a lot of time in meetings, and I think if we talked about it, debated it, or thought about it, there's a couple of options that could be workable, that we wouldn't get any ways behind, we'd, we'd all have to cooperate on maybe some, kind of scaling back a few things if we looked at it. I went and met with Brian, just to check on a few dates, to see where the important pieces are covered, and most of our work really takes place, like, in our committee meeting tonight. All of the, the items are on, and that's where the work starts. So I'd like to present to council, just for your consideration, and it's not me asking, it's us as a council collectively, if it would have any merit. Option number one would be, as I said, most of our meetings are committee meetings, so if we did a Tuesday, July 2, committee meeting, it would allow us to skip the monthly council meeting July 21, and in that meeting, a lot of the information would take place, so that it could come back to us, and, and it would tie right in with option number two. If we did the committee meeting on, I'm looking here, like, no monthly meeting in August, but we did the committee meeting on Tuesday, August 5, that would give continuity to our work being done, but it would give us a little bit of a breather over the summer months. The most important reason is the fact that there's a lot going on in the external part of the, the community that we end up going to, or being asked to attend, or whatnot, and, I mean, there's times that you're, you're going a lot during the day. So those are the two options, to meet for both of the July committee meeting and the August committee meeting, but scale back on the monthly meeting, because most of our work would be beginning in July. And just with some side, sidebar suggestions, that if in the August 5, Tuesday committee meeting, we did need to do, like, process some business, or something around planning board or whatnot, we could add a special council meeting and just focus on it for that period. The things that we would look at is that we would resume back to normal scheduled routine of our regular meetings on Tuesday, September 2, which really isn't a big break if we have those two committee meetings in place. And the reason why it would be Tuesday, September 2, because of Labor Day on September 1. Some of the things that might be, just as a suggestion that we could look at, so that we could do those two committee meetings, get the work done, would be if we scaled back on some of the things, so that our summer committee meetings could take place 4:30 to 6:30, instead of running really late in the summer. We do, do our business 4:30 to 6:30. Another thing that we could look at is if we were doing our monthly reports, we could scale them back to either highlights, or each council member would be just asked to read the notes of those reports for those two monthly meetings. And the final thing is, if anything did come up in business around planning board, or if there was a need to process city business, we could make sure that it was earmarked for the committee meeting on August 5, so that we could do a special council meeting added on into the committee. So I'm submitting that to you as a council, because it, it's going to require a vote of council. The reason why we have it on the schedule tonight is to allow, however council decides, we'd have to vote on it in resolution, and we could do that at the June monthly meeting. So that pretty well is what I wanted to bring to council to think about.
Thank you, councillor McCollman. Further comments from members of council? Councillor McDougal?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not against it. I, I know that we've never been busier, probably, and you wanna make sure that the work gets done. Previous times we've done something similar to this, we've, if needed, we held a noon council meeting, so, you know, probably, if there's any items around the, the month, it's, you could have them at a, at a June, at a noon meeting, a short meeting at noon? Did I say June? Sorry. But anyway, no, I'm not, I'm not against it. I, I, I could probably support it, I just wanna make sure that the work gets done, and we do have a lot of staff on holidays those two months too, and, but, and we expect the work to get done, but we also have developers that are trying to drive shovels in the ground, and, and we need to accommodate them, so I'm easy if it, if it's, if we can do it. So, thank you.
The only concern that I would have is I am not able to attend noon time meetings. I'm not sure, like, Justin, Nick's indicated, so Justin's probably in Charlotte. I know, like, that wouldn't be an option for me to be able to do, so I just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, I don't wanna say I'm against it, but I'm probably against it, I guess. I just found, and I was, when I was new to council, that's something that we did, but every time we did it, I found that we were here more than we were ever here before in those summer months, with those one-off, come in for lunch, come in, so if you're, are doing anything, you're pulled away, where I'm always a fan of getting here and spending the evening, getting everything done, and we're here till 10, 11 o'clock, whatever, as opposed to being here 20 times over the month, right? So I guess that's the only thing. I just found my experience in doing it, the few years that we did it previously, was that we'd end up being here more, because we'd have those one-off, special council meetings, because something had to be approved or passed, or whatever, so, yeah, just from previous experience, I, I didn't really like not having the set monthly meetings that you planned around and were able to go.
Yeah, I'd just like to chime in with the fact, too, that to Bruce's, councillor McDougal's point, that I, I wouldn't want us to miss a meeting and then, and then tie up a developer for another week or two. Sometimes that makes a big difference in projects, and they're trying to get things done, so it, anyway, as long as, it's a great plan or a great idea, as long as we're not interfering with anybody else trying to do some business, that, that my concern.
To, kinda, I guess, play devil's advocate a little bit, is there any way that if we were leading into a meeting, and we didn't have anything pressing, to then just make a resolution to cancel that meeting? How does, I just don't know how that would work, and what notice you need to be able to do that?
If I recall, I think we did this last year, though, didn't, did we, did we have a, I thought, I thought we had it, 'cause I thought we had to introduce a resolution.
I thought we did.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we did last July or something. We did not have a meeting and introduced a resolution, and there were some time requirements around getting that resolution to, JP, do you?
There was time constraints, I don't know the exact what they were, but we do have to introduce a resolution to cancel a meeting.
To cancel a meeting, yeah, it's a resolution, has to go to the minister, I think, to cancel, to cancel a meeting.
So I guess to, to, to bring it to a final point, again, I just wanna reiterate, I'm not asking because it's my idea, I'm asking HR because of it, and as I've, as I've stated, because it's a short period of time. Just a couple of things, just for us to think about. Yes, we did meet on, on quite a lot on noon time, when we tried this in a previous council. I think the fundamental thing that's really important is that we need to have some discipline, and the discipline would be... And, the discipline would be that we have two committee meetings, that we've earmarked to do business in, that would not interfere with not meeting at all in July or August, so they're there. And, someone also, I believe, made the comment about developers, and certainly, that's very, very important. And, I think I added the point that we could also add a planning board to our committee meeting, or a special council meeting to our meeting, if we had to process city business. So, that's there, to make sure that nothing gets missed or set aside. But, having said that, I think, I'm just putting this out to council, whether we're one way or the other, how we feel. And, for those that have to work, say, and can't come at noon time, I think another possibility there would be for those members of council that could meet the quorum, in order so that there would be enough people there for a meeting, if people that couldn't make it at noon time, there would be enough, with the exception of planning board. So, those were the three things that I picked up on the comments, that I just wanted to try and address. And, so I don't know whether we put that to a vote, your worship, at the June meeting, and people can yea or nay.
Yeah, I'll go to Counselor Dron first, and then I'll come back to you.
Yeah, I mean, just everybody else is putting their opinion forward. I would be of the opinion that we really only have two generally pre-scheduled meetings, the committee of the whole meeting, which is the first Tuesday, and the monthly meeting, which is the third Monday. I feel like there's, that's a good sort of separation, and if there was any pressing issues, we could fit them on one of those two, without really needing to meet any other time. Keeping in mind that if we, for example, if we were approaching that first Tuesday committee of the whole meeting, if we didn't have any issues of real substance, we could push them to the monthly meeting. And, conversely, if we were approaching the monthly meeting, and we didn't have a whole lot to do, we could either defer it, or just stick to those really quick monthly reports, and have a fairly short night out of it. I think with the first Tuesday and the third Monday, there's, unless there's a developer or something that really, really, really needs something, like, that's not a long space between meetings. Like, I don't know why we'd ever have to have a special meeting between those, but, I mean, things come up, so, but, it's just my start, yeah.
So, Counselor McCollman, to your question there, perhaps the best option would be then to return to council with a resolution at the next council meeting. You can help craft it. I think we ultimately just need to pick one or the other. And then, council can have a final discussion, and then we can have a vote on it. On a couple of other points, to Counselor Adams, the noon meetings, I don't think we're planning to go back to noon meetings. So, those are very difficult, so I wouldn't propose to schedule any. If council wants, I can just, you can let me know, or we can just ask around, if through summer meetings, June, July, August, if there's more of an interest to start earlier. 4:30 is often when we have our in-camera sessions. So, I'd sort of put that out there to council, have no problem starting at 4:30 through those summer months, if you want to include June or not. That would help get things faster along in the summertime, as long as it doesn't disrupt people's schedules, I think. Although the folks, most Counselor Adams, I think Counselor Dron, but for the most part, I think we start at 4:30 anyways, some evenings. So, yeah, that would be sort of my recommendation, Counselor McCollman, to bring forward that resolution, and give a hard date. The other option that you could consider is also to, sort of, cancel a committee of the whole meeting, because a committee of the whole meetings are not where we make final decisions of council, so you could look for that as an option for the first one in August. Overall, personally, I have no concern with cutting out one meeting. I think it does two things. I think you're right, Counselor McCollman, there's a lot on in the summer. And, there's a lot on, to Counselor McDougal's point. There's a lot happening right now, and I think maybe some staff would also probably appreciate just a gap. So, the last piece there, and we can talk offline or separately on it, the other option, and maybe I'll send an email around to all chairs. If chairs want to collectively look at perhaps taking August off for a series of committee meetings, that also could help free up some of that space through what is a very busy summer season, particularly with respect to going to events and that type of stuff. That takes off some of that additional pressures there. Okay, great, so we're in a resolution, Counselor McCollman, to our next council meeting. Great. Thank you. Move on to 6B, accessory building. Do we want to jump onto that, or we want to do the, keep going? Okay, we'll keep going, and we'll see if we can get through. Accessory building standards, former attached Counselor Cameron.
All right, thank you, your worship. A number of months ago, we had discussed the appearance of accessory buildings, more specifically shipping containers. Since that meeting, it's been brought up to me a couple of times about temporary structures that are being used year-round. And, when you look into the bylaw, it doesn't speak about any standards around those temporary structures that are now being used as permanent structures. It only speaks to built structures, and I think that it would be worthwhile to look into standards around those. I don't necessarily think it needs to be always standards around appearance, but standards of where they go, and setbacks, and all of those great things, because it is not spoke about right now.
Counselor, just a quick question before we open to the floor. Just when you say temporary, are you talking about shipping containers, one, but are you also talking about the tents?
Tents, yeah.
The tents, yeah. Fascinating, it was in Montreal recently, and the tents are everywhere, so it's a big, it's a thing. So, I'll open the floor to council with questions, comments, for Counselor Cameron.
Yeah, I definitely, the shipping container one was one that was brought forward a while ago. I'm still of the opinion that there needs to be some sort of standards and rules regarding that, before it gets too out of control, because it can become out of control. So, I would be in favor of us looking at whatever rules and regulations we can put around that, to make sure that we have some consistency throughout the community.
Getting some nods there, and some I agree. So, perhaps the path then would be to send this item to a planning board committee? I think it'll be a planning committee, or would it be bylaw governance?
This work was actually started in November of '24, as it relates to the whole CCAN piece. And, there was wording coming back to council in July, actually, on the alteration to that particular item in the bylaw. So, what we'll do now is kind of broaden our scope a little bit, and include tents, and bring that to planning committee for the June meeting, with potential wording coming back to council on the July meeting.
Is that where Counselor Cameron, Counselor Snow, rest of council? Yeah, there's a name for those types of tents, those driveway tents, but ask anyone who lives in Montreal, they'll tell you. Counselor Cameron, good? Awesome. Next, item C, Tower Street Park, Counselor Cameron, back to you.
Great. So, since our, I guess, maybe two meetings ago, we were talking about Tower Street Park. And, during that time, I had said, my personal opinion is that I don't really care what goes there, that a park just needs to be reinstated. Since that time, I've gone back and listened to the three consecutive meetings that were held in 2022, surrounding the park. And, there is a lot of information that I have found that is very inconsistent, one of which is that the parkland dedication is to be .75 of an acre. I believe it is currently at .2 something of an acre. So, I don't know where that .5 of an acre went. But, it is stated very clearly in those minutes that it is .75 of an acre. And, currently, in those meetings, three separate times, at three separate meetings, it is stated that the playground will be back, not the green space, but the playground. So, I am just changing my opinion now, that I don't, I do care what goes there. It should be a playground. It was stated publicly three times, passed in a resolution, that it will be a playground at .75 of an acre. And, I think that when we say things publicly through resolution, we have to follow through on those things. And, I think that, at this point, it is up to staff to figure out how to do that. I don't have a suggestion on how to do that. I do have a couple of other questions that certainly won't be answered tonight, but could be looked at and maybe brought back. The parcel of land was 2.75 acres. With where the current park was, which is where the building is now built, that parcel of land was the only remaining spot that was supposed to be parkland. I don't know how that parkland got a building built on it. The portion behind that in the field was the deleted portion from the parkland at two acres. So, my question is, why did that parkland get moved, when in all three meetings, it was discussed that that was to remain as the parkland, taken down to build, but to be put back up in that spot again? My other question is, during all of the meetings, it was discussed that the entrance to said building would be at the top of Brophy. And, now you have an entrance to that building that is maybe 15, 10 to 15 feet away from the stop sign. Just seems like a very odd place to have that. And, I don't know, I was not here, I don't know how this came to be, but there just seems to be a lot of inconsistencies between what was said during those meetings, and agreed upon, and signed off via resolution, to what actually transpired at that development. And, I would just like to know why we are currently looking at something that is very different than what was discussed three years ago.
Yeah, so I'll open the floor to council, but I'm looking over to staff, because I think that's going to have to be, those are a series of questions for staff, that we need responses.
Yeah, so I've made note of these series of questions, and as Counselor Cameron indicated, I don't have answers on, unfortunately, any of them tonight, but I will work to gather that up and bring it back for further discussion.
So, perhaps, can we, so, Counselor Cameron, do you want to follow up on that? There's a note of here, June 15th. Have any of yours, the review?
Yeah, there is supposed to be a park review done on Tower Street Park on June 15th, so I wanted to get this in and discuss before that. Because I don't know that, from what I understand, the park review is to look at whether to put a play structure back, or to make it into a green space. At this point, I don't think we really have a choice. I think it should be a play structure that is there. It was publicly stated numerous times. Most of the council who is here are the ones who have voted on having a play structure put back in that place, and to keep the play structure as .75 of an acre, and not .2521 of an acre. And, I would assume that these counselors would very much appreciate that to be followed through with.
The June 15th item was, Acting Director Robbie has done some external work to getting some park designs done. One is a passive area, more designed to sort of support the senior demographic in the area, and another was to reestablish of the play structure, and kind of review both options, to see what works best from a staff perspective. But, to Counselor Cameron's point, if it's the pass-by resolution that a playground structure is to be reinstalled, then we'll likely go with that option.
So, can we get an update, then, I guess, at the next meeting? Our next council meeting, we can get an update on the follow-up? Counselor McCollman, sorry, I didn't see your light on.
I just, thank you for going back in those 2022 minutes, Counselor Nick. I think at that time, just maybe, just a little clarification on that, when the developer was doing the work, and submitting the plans, I think the discussion at that time was that they did want to move some of that equipment, so that the work, as the development progressed, could be done. And, the developer certainly was agreeable to putting it back. And, I think where that came out of was that many of the seniors, as well as many of the young families from the area, it was really important to them that they were used to that space. And, I do remember that the developer, he had worked that into his comments, that they would be agreeable to it, so. But, thank you for going back and looking into that.
Thank you, Counselor Cameron. So, we'll have an update on that one at our next council meeting.
Can I just say?
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Sorry, I just remembered that I do have a photo from a previous meeting that'll circulate, and I'll ask to be added into the minutes as well, to confirm the parkland dedication versus the deleted portion of the park, where the development was supposed to happen, to show that the building was built in designated parkland.
Yeah, that would be great. Even if you can send that to staff, and when they put the package together to bring back to council, they can put all of the information together, that would be great. Counselor Cameron, next up is you, item D, Willow Street Parking.
Great, one more. Willow Street, so it's been brought to my attention a couple of times from some residents and the people who are using the racetrack, that during certain sporting events, I guess it kind of goes quite well with the no parking on Mickey Mouse Drive. During certain events, there is a lot of parking happening on the streets. It is a no parking zone, but people are excessively parking there. It makes it hard for people coming in with large trailers to get in. It makes it hard for people crossing the street in front of the dome to be able to see if there are cars coming or not. And, it does basically set us back to one-way traffic on that road when people are parked there. So, I'm just wondering if there is any suggestion on how we can enforce that no parking a little bit more strict, or maybe better signage, or something? But, there is, I mean, I live right around the corner, so I see when there are events happening at the turf, there is constantly people, not even parking on the road. Sometimes they are parked up on the grass. Sometimes they're parked in front of fire hydrants. So, I think that that should be maybe looked at a little bit closer.
Thank you, Counselor Cameron. We identified the same issues in the last number of weeks, since the turf field usage ramped up. Our chief has ensured that our officers are paying a little more closer attention to that area. And additionally, we're going to be having our bylaw enforcement officers start altering his shifts slightly to work some evenings during the peak hours on Willow, and start enforcing that a little more as well. As well as our recreation coordinators sent emails to user groups, letting them know to share information about where to park when tending events at the turf. So, our hopes is, over the next little while, that enforcement and notifications will improve parking in that area.
Thank you, Counselor Cameron, to DeRosier. I think at this point, we'll take a pause, because I think the Dunskey folks are here, so we'll do the Dunskey presentation, and then we'll resume with E, F, and G, as those are going to take a little bit longer, I'd anticipate, in our discussion. So, at this point, I'd like to welcome you up. I recognize, I forget, I forget your names, but I recognized you from the last time. So, welcome. Greg, you'll lead everybody in?
Yeah, sure.
Great.
We have Lauren McNutt, who's Director of Public Relations Engagement, I think, if I get that right. Ben is our mastermind of modeling and statistics. And, behind us is Leslie Malone, with the project sponsor. So, the presentation, Lauren, to get you going, should be here. And, we'll go full screen view. Here, where we at?
Yeah, there you go.
There we go.
Super.
And you just click along. There you go.
Hi, everyone, thank you. It's been about four months. We were here early February, weather is much nicer this time round, but it's always nice to be here in Summerside. So, we're going to walk you through just a presentation, again, going back to some of the slides, I think we presented back in February, just giving some context for the project. And then, we'll share the preliminary results of our analysis, and our preliminary recommendations, and then open it up for some questions. So, just as background, Summerside Electric, of course, you probably already know, provides electricity services to almost 8,400 customers across the city. The most, majority of those customers are residential, followed by commercial, and then a small portion that are industrial. Summerside, like many communities across PEI, as well as the Maritimes, and really across Canada, are experiencing growing demand for electricity. And, this is due to really two things, population and development growth. We're, this is bringing new service requests and upgrades, and we have our climate-related goals. So, we're seeing a lot of decarbonization efforts, encouraging customers to switch to cleaner electricity. In addition to that, of course, here in Summerside, our diesel generators are aging, and will be decommissioned soon, three by 2028, three more by 2035, and after that. So, to meet current and future demand, Summerside really needs a plan to replace those aging diesel generators. And, if we do, if we fail to do so, there is the potential risk of not being able to meet demand when it's there. And, that could ultimately lead to rolling blackouts, or brownouts, sorry. So, we've been working with the city team over the last few months to study cleaner alternatives to replace those aging diesel generators. So, we conducted a needs and risk assessment back between November, February. We conducted stakeholder consultations, the first of two, in February. Then, we took back that feedback we got from the community, in addition to some of the other... other criteria that we needed to assess to screen various different options and develop recommendations. We held our second and final stakeholder engagement as part of our scope of work last night, and we'll be able to share some of what we heard from the community this evening, or last evening, and then sharing the preliminary recommendations. And ultimately, there'll be a final report coming shortly thereafter. Just, I think we shared this previously, but this was part of our needs assessment. Ben really led this work. But you can see that the black line at the bottom there is Summerside's current electricity assets. The dotted blue line there shows sort of historical trends, past demand. And what we've done is sort of taken, extended that blue line based on population growth and projections, projected out what the typical demand would be. And then that blue, thick blue line really shows the potential risk of major or extreme events. Plus that dark, light gray is showing the additional imports from MB Power. And as you can see, as we start moving forward, demand and that peak demand is outstripping what the current availability capacity is. Ben, did I explain that?
No.
Okay. Anything else you want to add there? Okay. So back in February, we met with the community. There was twenty-five to thirty people that attended back in February. We had a nice, nice group. We spent a lot of time really trying to understand the community's priorities. And we did an exercise with them where we asked them, if this project was done, you had made recommendations, we replaced the diesel generators, what would you want that headline to say in the news? So we gave them actually ten options. I'll run through them quickly. But we asked, you know, would you want that headline to say, we want keeping the lights on, ensuring a reliable and secure grid? Cutting carbon, powering progress, clean energy is non-negotiable? Do we want smart investment? Summerside considering the true cost of energy choices? Do we want bold innovation within the city? Do we want to make sure that we're weathering the storm, preparing for extreme weather events? Do you want to make sure that the system considers the cost of stability, investing now but ensuring long-term sustainability and stability? Do you want to make sure that it's close to home, strengthening our energy generation on island? Do we want it to maybe say citizen power, more islanders choosing rooftop solar? Or do we want it to be community first, keeping electricity generation in Summerside? And lastly, do we want it to say potentially powering markets, driving local economic growth? And the community also brought up two additional potential headlines. Summerside diversifies its energy system and Summerside is a good energy neighbor. So during this process, it was a lot, but we wanted to, you know, give lots of options. And we asked the community to vote on which headline they would like to see. And they had, I think, a choice of five. In the end, these top three, you can see here, there was a range. People really had, you know, a lot of differing opinions, but in the end, these top three at the top here, keeping the lights on, reliability was paramount, cutting carbon, empowering progress, followed by smart investment. All of these others are, of course, really important, but I think, you know, very clearly the top three were prioritized by most. So after that community engagement, we undertook a modeling exercise. So we considered today's current electricity supply in the city, which includes imported electricity from MB Power, solar, wind, batteries and on-island diesel generators. And then we wanted to look at what are those potential midterm alternatives to replace those aging diesel generators? So we looked at a long list, I'm not, I can't recall the exact number, but there's a long list of potential supply options that were considered as alternatives, but they could be bucketed into these sort of three main categories. We looked at the same technology, so diesel generators, but using cleaner fuel like biodiesel, renewable diesel, ammonia and methanol. We looked at new technology and clean supply, so things like hydrogen, additional renewables, batteries. And then we looked at a combination of things, so a mix of that same technology, cleaner fuels plus new technology and clean supply. So that was all plugged into the model, ran a number of different scenarios, and we considered things like cost forecasts, technical constraints, so the availability and accessibility of all these different options. And we did not run anything beyond, I guess, should say beyond twenty thirty-five. However, there are other additional alternatives that may be available and worth considering longer term, but that was not part of our modeling run. We put one example, small modular reactors, but there are many others. And I think the big question is, there could be other things that are emerging that we may not even be aware of at this point. So after all of that analysis, keeping in mind the community interests and priorities, we've, and considering the critical near-term electricity supply needs for the city of Summerside, our recommendation is to buy and/or build twenty-four megawatts of on-island wind, add a ten-megawatt battery, strengthen the MB Power connection. You already have an allotment to have electricity from MB Power. The idea is to continue that and strengthen that connection. And build low-carbon diesel generators using cleaner fuels on island to address peak demand. I'm going to go through a little bit to explain why we've made these recommendations, and then we'll open it up for some questions. So why these resources? The community interests were really used as a gatepost to narrow down our recommendations. And it really came down to those, again, those top three community priorities. Reliability, keeping the lights on, sustainability, cutting carbon, and affordability, making sure that whatever Summerside invests in, that it's a smart investment. And the real challenge with all of this was trying to balance these three because there are sometimes some inherent challenges or tension between some of these things. So from a reliability standpoint, there's really three things to sort of rationalize this, these four key recommendations. Again, that critical near-term supply gap due to the aging infrastructure. Three diesel generators are set to expire or be replaced within the next three years, another three by 2035. There is a real need to make sure that we have enough capacity to meet the peak demand. The New Brunswick tie is important, still, as I said, really needs to be strengthened, but it does not cover all of Summerside's electricity needs, so more on-island resources are going to be necessary. And we really do see a combination, a need for a combination of resources that provides electricity when demand is there. So not only to be able to meet the regular demand, but also when you have that peak demand during some of those extreme weather events. From a sustainability standpoint, you know, we do recognize we're suggesting that you add some diesel generators. But do want to point out that new diesel generators are much more efficient, as well as we're suggesting the addition of using cleaner fuels, not traditional fossil fuels. And we really want to make sure that we are not undermining the energy transition. Our firm is very much committed to the clean energy transition, but we really want to make sure that we don't undermine that transition with an unreliable electricity system that might discourage electrification. We really want to try to encourage electrification, but if the electricity system is unreliable, we actually run the risk of undermining that long-term transition. As I mentioned, diesel generators with new cleaner fuel is what's recommended, and it would mostly be used for peak demand. It's sort of the supply of last resort, if you will. It will only be used when necessary to kind of cover that peak demand. And there are, as we mentioned, potential for additional new resources as they become available in the future, sort of beyond that 2035 timeframe. And you can see in the graph here, I'll just kind of try to quickly describe it. The orange line here really identifies sort of if we were to continue on to 2035 as business as usual, households do not convert to heat pumps, they do not convert their transportation to electric vehicles. But the blue line shows you if we were to electrify, assuming these households convert to heat pumps, electric vehicles, we see a significant reduction in the overall energy or total greenhouse gas emissions of the system with these new resources. And lastly, affordability. When we ran this through the model, this package of supply options really came out as the most affordable option to meet Summerside's electricity needs. The other options that were screened, as I mentioned at the outset, there were many, but these options were screened out because of cost constraints. This visual here is just illustrative. We did not run a rate impact analysis for this work, but there has been studies that have looked at what the outcome of electrification is going to, is expected to be on the total energy wallet of a household. So as you electrify, of course, your electricity costs are going to go up, but you're going to see lower costs in terms of heating oil or gas in your vehicles. And the results are showing that PEI households are expected to see approximately a thirty percent reduction in their overall energy costs through electrification. We shared the findings and the preliminary recommendations with the community last night. We had a little over twenty people attend last night's session. The feedback was really positive. We felt and we heard, some of the community members came up and spoke to us after, sharing that they do feel we struck sort of that right balance between meeting Summerside's near-term capacity needs and the community's priorities. And I think participants really understood that there are trade-offs with all of our decisions. So no one decision is perfect, but we really tried to strike that right balance and recognizing that there are trade-offs with each. There were some questions that the community is hoping to hear going forward as this project continues beyond our role, but the timeline or sequence to implement these recommended supply options, which will come first or how will they, when will they be implemented? Where will some of these new on-island wind batteries and generators be located? How will Summerside strengthen connections with New Brunswick and Maritime Electric to make sure that we get that supply from New Brunswick to Summerside? What are the rate impacts of the recommended package of supply options? And then lastly, even though certain supply options didn't make it into our recommendations like hydrogen at this point, there was a desire to at least continue to explore pilots and the opportunities that some of these innovative supply options offer. That's it, Ben, I don't know if there's anything else to add?
Yeah, so just additional color on, I think, the slide showing our plan, putting in the diesel generators. We ran the numbers and they ran, I think, about five percent of the hours in the year. So these are not things that are going to be running really, really frequently. There are alternative fuels. In Atlantic Canada, there's suppliers of biodiesel that are currently available. There was a supplier of renewable diesel that was selling renewable diesel into the US. And obviously, there has shifted in such a way that that refinery is temporarily offline, maybe to come back. So there might be opportunities to get renewable diesel, you know, as people are pursuing decarbonization, we really hope that those markets mature and that there's a chance to get those fuels, you know, sooner. Renewable diesel can be blinded with existing diesel, it's the same chemical, so you can really, you pay more for it, but you can kind of really make it bespoke, custom to your targets on how you would impact the mine. So these generators are clean or not clean, but not at all, they're just because they're the same diesel generators that are used today for diesel doesn't mean they're going to be in the future, not being used for other types of diesel. And the wind and batteries, so when we saw the wind, that definitely is a message of replacing the West Cape contract and then a bit more. That helps you keep the hours that you're using diesel down, so it's certainly part of this is safe, it will be there. And also creates opportunity for charging the additional battery capacity we saw. Battery capacity was very much a big cold extreme weather event supporting beside really is important for that. We ran a case where we booked the sort of coldest winter that we have on record to our load models and said, well, we've got a few of those circumstances. And that's really what we saw all this time, you know, to support and make sure that it's a viable system, not needing too hard of the details and still being like the hell of a basis we have. So it's a very interactive strategy. Each piece has to work together. It's not some way you could isolate one place, they're just going to have to see if it can still run out. The only other thing I will say is, while we saw this work up till 2035, you saw that that gap continues past 2035. So these are near-term actions. And I think deferring or delaying could, you're already going to have additional things that need to be done, but if you like this, deferring and delaying could create even larger problems if the load model used to go at the pace that we're seeing today. So I think these are near-term and critical. It's very important to bring that in our car view and also there are great resources to set up for future decisions that might open up the technologies that you're allowed to use for the coordination of the sort of things that take deeper and longer effort to go with this.
Well, thank, my mic on? Yeah, well, thank you, Lauren, and thank you, Ben, for your presentation. It was smart and balanced, as well as your recommendations. At this point, I'll open the floor to council. If council have any questions? Councillor.
Just a sort of a what-if. If we were tomorrow, get a call from Maritime Electric and they said, hey, we're going to let you dial into our cables over in Borden-Curlton, I don't know what happened, but would that affect any of your recommendations or is that sort of just
Yeah.
a bonus on the load models that you talked about?
I would say our study and our modeling was based on the idea that fifteen megawatts could be obtained, like on a reliable basis for capacity from MB Power flowing through the maritime system to Summerside. We did not assume more than fifteen. We used that as a conservative assumption for the sort of hours where the system is more constrained and when overnight and times where you have less electricity constraints, we allowed it to actually use more power to charge batteries and do some decisions about importing a little bit more down those cables. My understanding Summerside has the right to thirty megawatts coming from MB Power. If you could solidify the ability to get the thirty megawatts, you know, to deliver to the city of Summerside under conditions that gave you really strong certainty about that delivery, then I think you could adapt the strategy here to maybe rely more on that supply and a little bit less on local generation. We didn't study a firm thirty megawatts through. I think that's probably would take two things, like clarifying the delivery to the city from the maritime cables and then also firming up the supply on the New Brunswick side. So not just depending upon the market conditions there to always be available supply, but thinking about capacity contracts that could supply that energy. So I think there's a couple of things that would need to be pursued to really make sure that you could afford use of your capacity on the cables.
Any further questions from members of council? I have one quick question there. Ben, when you said twenty-four and Lauren, you said twenty-four megawatts of wind, is that in addition to the current twelve that we have or is that, and is that in addition to West Cape? Why does that additional twenty-four megawatt mix, what does that look like?
So we took the West Cape and said the contract would expire, and this is a replacement for that West Cape and then additional to that, like basically an extra fourteen megawatts on top of the ten from West Cape, the existing Summerside going to be left in through the period because the West Cape contract's the much more immediate thing. So in that new, it's like fourteen megawatts. Why it's so specific, we went in two-megawatt increments to try to like get this value in. And like our sort of goal was to look for a value that didn't show a lot of spilled wind or exported power. So we were trying to size it so that that was really the amount of wind that you would use thoroughly without oversizing it. And I did have a situation where you have a lot of extra wind, but you didn't have a lot of it. So it seems like an odd number, but it was really just trying to figure it out.
No, yeah, no, I didn't think it was an odd number. I'm not surprised by some of this as well. And you've got the ten-megawatt four-hour lithium battery as well. And really, our community has seen essentially what you're proposing here is what we've been doing, with the exception of the strengthening of the New Brunswick connection. We have been trying to do that, but it's outside of our control, but maybe others will get on board. But, and we have seen even as recently as February, what this can But and we have seen even as as recently as February, what this can look like. You said you you mentioned the coldest, you you did your projections for a severe cold weather event. We had a severe cold weather event two winters ago or one winter ago. And then this past winter, we had another event that caused significant disruption, and it was a mix of wind, solar, and battery that kept the lights on here in the city. So it's it's spot on. Counselor McDougal?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. I I don't know if you had mentioned it or not, but I I see the fifteen megawatts from West Cape. When is that contract due?
Twenty twenty-seven.
Twenty twenty-seven? Okay, thank you.
I'm seeing no further questions. Thank you for your, oh, Counselor Snow, yep.
You mentioned the how important it is that, like, we don't delay. Timing-wise recommendations, obviously, you guys are the experts, so I rely heavily on people that know what they're talking about as opposed to what I'm thinking. But timing-wise, what's that look like ideally?
So from a planning perspective, you have resources that are set to retire in 2028 that really need to have a replacement in place. If you're able to extend the life of those, then maybe that gives you a little bit of extra space. Every single year in power systems all over the world, it is a gamble on whether, if you have a really bad year or a really cold event, your system is going to be way more stressed than right now. So if your returns happen to hit at exactly the same time you have a very cold year, it's a year that that's your perfect storm, so it's going to be a really bad storm. But I think it's a, it's a, it's like raising the.
Well, I think I think Deputy Mayor Snow, Counselor Snow is maybe next steps for council we talked about last night. So the next step is Dunskey's gonna do their final report. Expect to come back to council in July to receive that report. And you'll have time, from what you've seen, to ask more questions if you want and to engage with public if somebody chooses to communicate with council. And then, once you receive the report in July, you'll have some another month. And then the plan is for staff to come to you with the Dunskey final report in our hands and come up with a solid plan of the steps forward for answering the questions for the community, which would be, what order should we do, where are things located, and maybe some costing at the same time, if we can get that done all at once, and try to put another step towards council to make a decision on a path forward. This was really an exercise to identify, and I like the words, critical near-term deficits that we need to solve. And that goes to the delay Ben was talking about. It's always a balance in operations between aging equipment and how well they'll operate for a continued period of time before something might give. That's kind of the plan forward, we see. It can be adjusted depending on need and council meetings, but that's the plan for now.
Counselor Morrison?
If, this might be an unfair question, but out of those four recommendations, if you had to pick one, or if you had to put them in an order, what would be number one?
I think what I would say is the near-term sort of, I think there's two things around here that don't involve building, which is the strengthening of the New Brunswick connection and to the extent that you pursue, that's really important to make sure that that's there. And then you have the contract, and if that's good, if there's a way to extend out, if you push that forward or something similar to it, you know, a way to get in, sort of having a term of, you know, nice, uh, low-paying sort of negotiation. So if there's, uh, for liability, I would say having a very solid, uh, retirement, uh, transition.
Yeah, no, and Yeah, and 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 that that helps me. I I'm just, and I and I love all the green stuff. But for an example, I think we now have twelve megawatts of our own. And then I believe it's nine, maybe, that we get from Cape Wolf. I'm not exactly sure of the numbers, but. But the problem is sometimes when the power goes out on PEI, that we don't, then the wind turbines are not really useful, right? Because we need some power in order to get power out of them. Or am I misunderstanding that?
Yeah, I think, but as a combination of the battery, the existing battery and then the global model was a ten-megawatt four-hour on top of a ten-megawatts two-hour battery that is already existing. So I guess you could kind of, they could, it is a twenty-megawatt battery that had, let's say, sixty-megawatt hours of storage in our models. It takes a lot of power and it stores it for the right amount. So I think if you did bring in isolation without the batteries supporting it, then you don't get as much, you know, then a lot of going inside. The diesel generators, you don't want them to run super, super clean because they're expensive and, you know, they also have
Right. They're they're actually, my understanding, they're more of an asset sitting there not running than running.
Yeah.
And whether that makes sense or not, but.
Like I said, I think we have five percent of the hours in the year where we saw them running
Right.
response to those that needed to have that generation there.
Yeah.
And, you know, we ran under sort of standard planning conditions. We looked at like the sort of additional generation we generally want to have to make sure you have a good margin and covered it. You know, when it comes to operations, a specific outage, you know, that happens on a path between New Brunswick and Saskatchewan, meaning the operator calls for specific operations and makes them that. So we didn't, we don't run through every possible set of circumstances, you know, those generators are there to respond to occasions, events, and the greater declines to be there during those super cold periods.
Yeah.
So I think you want to have all the tools you can within the circumstances. The batteries and the generators are a lot harder to manage.
Yeah. I just, it, I guess, I'm just a little bit old school and and the diesel generators have been there, the city's been producing power, and Greg could correct me, that's one hundred twenty-nine, one hundred thirty years, or whatever, how old the electric department is, I'm not sure. And it's always nice to have that backup. And and we on PEI are at the end of the line, and Summerside's even at the back of that, unfortunately. We have that power, and that's great. But it always makes me nervous that the infrastructure right across Canada or North America, depending on who you listen to, may be in a bit of a problem or a bit of trouble. And when things start getting cut back, you know, the people in Ontario or Quebec and are not, they're not too concerned about whether PEI's getting power or not. And it, to me, it's just nice that we have some guaranteed generation sitting there, hoping that we never have to use it. But it would be really nice to have, you know, and and the electric department's been good for the city of Summerside over all those years. Maybe not every year, but over the hundred and thirty years, it's certainly been an asset. And hopefully, we can continue to have that and take advantage of it. And and that's why I I like all the rest of it, but I I just truly believe that we're gonna have to find some way to have guaranteed power and not relying on solar and wind and backup batteries. And it's all good. I'm not, but I I personally believe that generation's really important. Anyway, thanks very much. It's a lot of information. I really appreciate it, and I'm sure there's more to come.
Great. Well, thank you again, Lauren and Ben. So in terms of next steps, Director Goody outlined what those will be, and then we'll look forward to receiving and reviewing the full report and look forward to speaking with you again. Thank you for both the work that you've done and also the public engagement component that you engaged with. This has been something that's been really important to this council, to make sure that we get out and speak and hear from all of our residents. And and I think the sessions that you led went over quite well, and so we'll look forward to receiving the full details of the report and looking forward with some urgency in terms of how we go about considering the recommendations and integrating that into our current tenure plan for our electric utility. Great. Thank you very much. I'm great. Just, I know there were some folks coming in, joining us. We have three items left on our committee of the whole agenda here. We will do those, and then we'll move into our special council meeting. We're moving pretty close to on time here tonight, so that's good. We have three here still left after we did the first four. Counselor Trenholm, are you still with us there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great. The first one is you, Counselor Trenholm. This is the designated encampment site discussion. I'll hand it over to you.
Sure, thank you. This is certainly never an easy topic, I guess, to put on the table, but more and more, I guess, we're seeing encampment sites around the city. And you have both the the people who are unhoused, from safety to health concerns, and then the general public has some safety concerns as well in terms of not knowing where encampments are and and such. So I know we respond as a city, police services become involved when we have that knowledge, and and we dismantle the encampments. But then they, I guess, appear shortly thereafter in a location. And I do know, in terms of looking at Canada, like multiple court rulings across Canada, whenever there was, I guess, when the number of homeless people exceeded the number of indoor shelter spaces, the charter challenge, I believe that's what they're calling it, and then the encampments are allowed to stay. Just, and and this, I guess, when we look at the recent data from the John Howard Society, I've put that in the in the in the Cow request here. Seventy-two is the number, and if you're just looking at the ages, it's eleven are youth, forty-six are between twenty-five and forty-nine, and eleven are fif- sorry, eleven are over fifty. And of those, forty-three have been longer than six months, and and most have been homeless for more than a year. So I'm I'm not presenting this and fully believing that designated encampments is the right solution, but I fully believe that it warrants council and the city's research and just consideration in terms of developing what that could look like and gathering in from the community, from city staff, legal team, organizations who are supporting the unhoused, but but certainly the unhoused themselves. So I think reaching out to the unhoused population and saying, if in a designated encampment site that exists in the city, would they use it, or what would be the pros and cons? Because I think knowing some of that information at the outset would be helpful. So I guess I'll just open that up in terms of what other counselors feel about this topic. It's not an easy topic, but I just like to open the floor.
Thank you, counselor. Any feedback, comments from rest of council? Counselor McDougal?
I just, you know, I I think it would be a tremendous liability for the city, and I just don't know where to go with this one, so. But I think it would be, you know, if the city wanted to, to, I think, what Ken is, or Counselor Trenholm is asking is the staff review it, but I would be very cautious of the liabilities that we would, we would be looking at. So just my thought.
Personally, I'm not willing to even comment on this at the time until we hear from our emergency services staff. Until then, and I have more information, I wouldn't be feel any ways comfortable commenting on what should and shouldn't be happening.
All right, counselor, that's, I guess, our limited for our discussion here today. And we know homelessness, housing insecurity continues to be an issue in our community. We see it. We have been working with the provincial government to increase the number of shelter beds. The province brought in a new shelter last year. There are still significant shortages in terms of transitional housing and prevention and treatment support for addictions, mental illness, and the ongoing drug crisis that we have in our community, as well as the need for more and more housing-first models. And I think we've been encouraged by some of the work the province has been doing. And I think we have a meeting upcoming. We have certainly put out a request to the Ministers of Health, Justice, and Housing at the province to discuss this issue as it remains a concern in our community. Counselor Snow, yep?
I'd be very interested to see, I see Ken has some numbers here of the Summerside emergency shelter and the utilization of that shelter. And strangely enough, you can see how it starts to decline as the weather gets nicer. It'd be really interesting to see what that utilization or the uptake from the unhoused population is come July and August. Unfortunately, I think the decision is made by some to then camp or do encampments instead of utilizing utilizing the shelter that's in place. So if that's the case, we're we're into a real no-win situation in trying to proceed as a council to find a place for a permanent encampment when sometimes it's an extreme struggle to get an actual apartment built and built in certain locations. I think is a very tough discussion to have and and realization of finding a path forward on that is tough. So I I would be interested to see what staff bring back and emergency services bring back as what other municipalities are doing, recommendations. But I I just see it as a very difficult path forward to find a solution other than continuing to work with the provincial government to find shelter places for these individuals.
Thank you, Deputy Snow. And yeah, to your point as well, it's really important that we make sure we know what our responsibilities and roles are here as a municipality and what they're not. There are certain things that we simply are not responsible for, and while that means there are still critical issues in our community, that means we need to work with other levels of government as partners to find solutions that they are responsible for. And this would certainly be one of those. So Counselor Trenholm, we'll go to you again. The next item is Craig Avenue from the May Committee of the Whole Meeting.
Sure, yes, yes. But I guess on that topic, though, would would we be comfortable just in staff exploring, like Counselor McDougal in terms of liability? Counselor Adams, I mean, getting the emergency services feedback, would that be of interest or of value?
Counselor, I'm I'm looking around here now, trying to get a read of whether counsel wants to study what an encampment would, designated encampment site would look like. I think for, and I don't get the indication that they want to move it in that way. Perhaps the best thing for you to do would be to connect with staff and with counselors to see if there is more information that you'd want to bring forward, engage some of the interest from your fellow counselors, and then bring it back to committee of the whole.
Sure, yeah, no, that sounds that sounds fine.
Okay. Over to you with Craig Avenue.
Sure, yeah. So I I submitted, this was, I guess, you can call it an amendment, I guess, I don't know, or an attachment to the previous Cow meeting. I just followed up with the residents to determine what their interest was or wishes were. So in total, there's sixteen residents who live directly on Craig, and fifteen responded either in person through door-to-door or through telephone or email. So I mean, that's a ninety-four percent response rate, which is pretty impressive, I guess. Of those fifteen that responded, thirteen said they'd be in favor of two-speed humps and removing the chicanes. Two or two households said they would prefer the chicanes. The only caveat is to that is that those two individuals, English wasn't their first language, so I didn't have their language ability. So I'm not sure I presented accurately what I was asking them. So I'm not sure then they consequently maybe didn't answer correctly what, because they maybe didn't understand the question, so. So I guess the other issue, I guess, highlighting just some of the concerns in terms of, and if you're looking at the at the document, it's on page twenty-five of your Cow meeting today. So effectiveness, saying the streets, speed humps are explained to be more reliable, slowing traffic than chicanes, pedestrian safety. So more on more than one occasion, residents mentioned an eighty- to ninety-year-old person who walks on Craig Avenue with a walker at least three times a day, and they must navigate the roadway. And so when this happens, they have to put themselves into the traffic as opposed to walking alongside the road because the chican blocks that, blocks any opportunity there. Child safety as well, that children running in between from Dale Drive into the Craig Avenue kind of increases the dangers by speeding vehicles. And of course, chican misuse, children sometimes at times And of course, chicane misuse, children sometimes at times playing in the chicanes, risking injury. And unconditional traffic calming, so speed humps will end up slowing or stopping all vehicles, where chicanes only impact the vehicles if there's opposing traffic. Otherwise, it's reported that they will, the traffic will continue at a high rate of speed in some cases. There's a few more points here, everybody. Thanks for your patience. So increased traffic, traffic volume, so with the recent townhouse developments, some commercial growth in North Randville that uses elevated motor vehicle levels as well as the number of people who are actually using the street to walk on. And again, accessibility, I just want to focus on that, that speed humps for anybody who's using a walker can maneuver the walker over the speed hump where a chicane, you can't go on the grass, you can't go over the chicane, and it puts you in the line of traffic. So anybody with a chicane, oh, sorry, mobility scooter or a walker would be directly in the lane. And the other point, if temporary speed humps aren't available, everybody is certainly welcoming installation of a permanent, permanent speed hump. So I wanted to bring that back to the committee of the hole just on the information that residents themselves would like, would desire, so, as a caveat, I guess.
Thank you councillor Trentholm. Councillor McDougal, you have a question there?
How many speed bumps? Was it two?
Uh, two, yes.
Have we had a traffic count done there recently? Like, is it, is, are we still, we have? Is there an issue? Like, I'm just wondering if, like, there is the speed or the traffic. I guess to think about it, like, there's other, I'm not saying this isn't an important area to look at, but there's also other areas in the city where maybe the counts are higher and are also in need, so, like, I'm just wondering.
There's a traffic count done pre-installation of the chicane and post for tech services attract its usefulness. And the reporting that I recall came back favorable to the chicane slowing traffic. But I don't have the exact report in front of me that could clarify that tonight.
I don't live there, but I do travel it every single morning and I'm, usually there's maybe one other car, but I haven't experienced any, and it's at a high traffic time when there are kids, you know, waiting and at the end of the road for the bus, and they're walking up and so on. I'm just wondering if maybe we could work with tech services in regard to the part with pedestrians having to get around it. Maybe we can, we can look at that part of it. Maybe there's a solution there.
Is the chicane back in? No, it's not in. Councillor Trentholm, maybe you can correct this, but I think one of the issues for residents on Craig is the almost night racing. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, it's certainly that it's been reported that there's lots of night racing. Using it as a drag strip, that's been a common theme. Is, yeah, so there is, there's, so it's, by all means, it's not a high-traffic street. There's more traffic than maybe there was, but there's more traffic, I think, in every street in Summerside than there was. However, but because it's a little lower-traffic street, that it does allow one person to be, or a couple of people to essentially drag down the street. So that's what residents are telling me is happening. It's definitely concerning.
So if, I guess, we'd have to check with police services to see if this has been reported ever. And if it hasn't been reported ever, then we encourage people to report if that's happening. And maybe we could chat with chief and ask if he could maybe chat with people in the area. If it's, if they know who it is, then a chat could be had. If it's always at a certain day or a certain time, well, that's a pretty easy thing to have. You know, chief's quite proactive in getting rid of problems before they start, so.
I know in terms of timing, it's, I've been told it's lunchtime, lunchtime or in the evenings or Friday night, Saturday night. And I do, I do, I've been told that it's been reported to the, to the police. I haven't followed up to confirm, but I would trust that the residents did, did report it.
Yeah, no, I just, this is, I guess, sort of the first time I'm hearing of the night racing part, but I'd be supportive of maybe, I know we have probably a queue of locations that we're going to put our temporary, they're all, yeah, I know, we probably, we move them around though. It seems like it might be a good spot to try maybe when school's back and then get a, we did a count in a data collection for the chicanes, if maybe we did one for the bump. Because as a, as a, someone that doesn't do any racing, the bump would probably slow me down more than the fun obstacles on the side of the road.
I don't, I don't know this for sure, but I think we talked about this last time, that there were temporary speed bumps put in there at one point, and they were stolen from the area. I just want, I feel like we're talking about putting them back in, and I don't know if we were all aware that they were once there, and they obviously did not do their job.
But did we get a, did we get data before they were stolen, which we could use to put in permanent?
So to councillor Dron's point, I think, I think we're getting to the point where we need to start looking at whether or not, if we're going to start putting in speed humps, and I assume those are the bigger, longer, stretched-out ones. I spent the weekend in Dartmouth and Halifax, I was over there coaching my daughter's ball. And there is all like the side streets as I was racing from ballfield to ballfield. There's a bunch of side streets that have sort of like the speed humps that we see by Elm Street School. And it's sort of those side, they were, I noticed there were a lot of side streets that were connecting sort of main streets. And I assume they probably did their research in Halifax and Dartmouth and found this to be a positive solution and it's more permanent one. And they, they seemed to work, and the traffic was really calm in those side streets in between. They're more busy ones, so. Since we only have limited speed bumps, the little temporary ones, I'm not a big fan of those. I think they just go in and then we move into another place, and it's just sort of moving things around. But I think, I think we need to find a more long-term solution for these types of things. And if there's areas that, you know, are more concerned, put them in. And residents are, even if the residents are not in favor of it, as hard as that is, if there's areas of concern, then we got to make decisions that's best for that area for the residents of the city. So if there's something that we know works in regards to calming traffic, we've done lots of things over the years to try to do that, but a more permanent solution is probably needed.
Yeah, thank you councillor Snow. One option would be to, again, have our planning committee look at traffic calming measures, speed humps in particular. We do have some, we have some on Willow, and we have some in front of Elm Street, the permanent ones. And I'm going to go to get you in a second councillor Morrison there, but one of the things that I think sometimes we do too much of is talking about one street or one stop sign or one crosswalk and trying to pull it back up to, look, where are we going to put speed humps? Are we going to or not? And if we are, then you can decide how much money to put into the budget, which ultimately is what you have to do to decide how much that is a priority. Right now, I think we have four temporary ones. They're all in place, so there are none on hand. So perhaps to councillor Snow's point, we can have a discussion as to where those, if council wants to look at doing this in a more permanent way, and then how it would be financed and, or not. Councillor Morrison?
Yeah, not to drag it out any longer, but I'd also be curious to know the cost to install the, it would have to be a pair, obviously, of the chicanes, including the labor, and then the cost of installing the temporary ones that we use, which can be good or bad. And the only thing with those two is if they're on a street that have no curbs, I've seen numerous people drive down, then drive across someone's lawn to go around them instead of going over the, so that creates a whole new problem. And I'd also be interested, when we do all this discussion, to have the cost of the permanent ones, what it costs when they put them in, to dig out the asphalt and then make the hump. And I think it would help make some decisions too. I'm sure there's a cost to every one, but some may be a lot larger than the other ones. All that information would help making decisions.
Is council okay with moving ahead with that approach? Okay, councillor Trentholm?
Sounds great. Thanks a lot.
We're going to move on to item G now, which is the last of our committee of the hole meeting here. This is councillor Dron.
Thank you, your worship. I will make it quick. Just, I had spoken to a resident who got in touch with me a couple weeks ago. They had just sort of made an observation at our skate park down by the Credit Union Place that there were users not wearing helmets. And it was just sort of a question that was posed to me, wondering if that was actually mandatory or if we had a bylaw. So I checked with, actually, I checked with councillor Trentholm right away because I knew he would be knowledgeable on this topic. And he got back to me pretty quickly, just mentioning some other municipalities. Strout Towns skate park, helmets required. Squish skate park, helmets are required. Brookvale, when you're cycling, helmets are required. And then a couple more, Nova Scotia. There's Halifax Skate Park, Dartmouth Skate Park, both require the helmets. And Nova Scotia law requires helmets when cycling, skateboarding, scootering, rollerblading. And in Brunswick and Moncton, they have a skate park that it's required. So I got in touch with CAO, just wondering what our bylaw actually states or if we even have a bylaw. And through him, Chief Blackyer, got back to me and stated that the provincial helmet legislation only, I better read it. So while the traffic, Highway Traffic Act covers bicycles and motorized scooters, it seems that there's no clear laws in place for skateboard, or skate park users or street skaters, rollerbladers, which sort of leaves things up to individual discretion or voluntary adherence to the signage that we had up. He mentioned that when our skate park opened, that had mandatory signage, but as it's not in the bylaw, it wasn't really enforceable, so. I'm not asking for anything, I just thought if there was a desire to look at it in the bylaw review committee, if it's something that we wanted to explore, considerations would be obviously maybe budgetary, but certainly like the ease or the practicality of enforcing it, so. Anyway, it was a concern that was brought up, and I just wanted to see if there was an appetite to discuss it or look into it, so.
I can speak for myself, councillor, yes, I would. I think the helmets and brain injury are such, brain injury is such a serious health issue and permanent. Yeah, and I think if you're looking at other municipalities and they have a bylaw or a requirement for helmets to be at skate parks, it certainly makes sense for us to go that way.
Any other members of council want to give some direction? Do you want to send this to bylaws and governance or not? Oh, JB, sorry, you got something?
Just really briefly, that the current Highway Traffic Act does not govern helmet usage for bicycles in our parks and green spaces, which the skate park and our boardwalk and Rotary Park, for example, isn't included in. The chief has indicated through our bylaw review, as from a staff level, that this, to, this piece would be added to one of our municipal bylaws, so would be enforceable from Summerside Police. So that work is undergoing right now and underway. So I would assume we would have something back, I don't want to say in the near future, but relatively soon to include all of our parks and green spaces into a bylaw that would be enforceable by Summerside Police for helmet-wearing in our parks and green spaces.
And in terms of the roadways where it's already enforceable, obviously that's just bicycles, but is there, are they looking at skateboards and electric scooters and everything else too?
I made a note of that when you were speaking to that point, and I'll include that into the discussion with Chief Black here as well, and we'll go from there.
Great, so it sounds like we've got chief police and police looking into it. Great, councillor Dron, good? Great. Move item seven, CAO updates. I don't think we have any. Do we have CAO to resume? No, so we will adjourn our committee of the hole meeting here at 6:46 PM. And if council's okay, we'll move right into our special council. Is that fine with all the rest of council? Great. So I will call to order our special council meeting here in the beautiful city of Summerside of June third, two thousand and twenty-five at 6:46 PM. I'll begin by calling for a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Councillor Snow, second. Councillor Dron, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Changes, revisions, no's, seeing none, we'll carry with the agenda as presented. At this time, I'll call on any member of council to declare conflicts of interest with respect to any item on the agenda this evening. Councillor Morrison?
I will sit out five A and five B.
Thank you councillor Morrison. So when we get to five A, we'll just take a pause, and then we'll make sure to send someone to find you. I'm not sure where you go on these, but whoever goes out there, they find you in the end. There's still items six, seven, eight, nine, and nine A. With that, we'll move into item four, two forty-five Pope Road, East Prince Funeral Home discretionary use. Chair Planning Board, councillor Dron.
Okay, thank you, your worship. Yeah, two forty-five Pope Road discretionary use. I don't imagine this is the one CBC is here for, but we'll give it a shot. Application was received from East Prince Funeral Home Cooperative Limited for PID number seven, five, nine, six, six, two. Purpose of the application is to allow a crematorium as a discretionary use in the C2 zone. Crematorium means a building fitted with the proper equipment for the purposes of the cremation of human or animal remains. The application was advertised in the May thirteenth edition of The Guardian, and letters were mailed to property owners within sixty meters or two hundred feet of the subject properties. The explanation of the process, in order to process a discretionary use, the following steps are required. Step one, the discretionary use is read at a public meeting, council's first meeting. Step one is taking place this evening. Step two, planning board reviews the application and prepares a recommendation to council. Step two takes place at a planning board meeting. I believe that'll be our July second meeting. And step three, the discretionary use is read to be adopted by council. The resolution will be either carried or defeated by vote of council. And step three takes place at council's second meeting, which I presume is July twenty-first, at our regularly scheduled monthly meeting. Please note that in accordance with section five point two zero of the city zoning bylaw, any person who is dissatisfied by a decision of council in respect of the administration of this bylaw may appeal council's decision within twenty-one days to the Island Regulatory and Appeals Commission. The current zone, service commercial, C2, permitted uses, subject to bylaw requirements. I kind of ask every time, do, should I go through all these? Okay, so the current zone, these are all the permitted uses that are available as of right. Under the commercial section, animal care facility, hospital and kennel, body shop, repair shop, sales establishment, service station, or washing establishment for automobiles, bakery, bank or financial institution, building supply outlet, bus terminal, business or professional and medical office, convenience or grocery store, funeral home, office-style industry, liquor store, motel or hotel, an accessory building, parking lot, private club, dining room, takeout and drive-through restaurants, small and large retail stores, service centers, shopping centers, automobile storage facility, outdoor storage area, self-storage and warehouse, care facilities, dry, dry, or taxi station, fitness center, residential dwellings lawfully existing prior to nineteen ninety-nine, institutional, allowed in office or college/university, market, tourist or pool hall. And under institutional, we have utility facility, culinary suite. Comments and questions? We, at this time, would invite the applicant, if the applicant would like to make any comments or presentation. We have Gary, the applicant, yeah, if you could step forward to the podium and just state your name.
And I'm from Summerside. I'm of the Board of Directors of the East Prince Funeral Home Cooperative Limited. The board meets monthly to oversee the families that we serve. We've come here this evening at our twenty-twenty, and approved at that annual meeting in twenty twenty-two. So you can, and many of the new members are from different cultures. We want our facility to incorporate the different cultural needs, and we have done this during the planning of this new facility. Much thought has gone into the needs of all our members and those who live in the surrounding community. We have met with several funeral homes who have crematoriums in cities and in residential areas. We have asked many of the questions that the people in the community might ask about such a facility going- such a facility going up near them. In 2022, it was feasible for the construction of this facility. The members could see very clearly on their financial statement that the cost we had incurred for cremations in 2022, we could afford to do this financially. As you're aware, this past year, most funeral home has closed its doors, which left us even busier and doing many more cremations. The cost to our members for doing cremations off-site has increased significantly these past few years, and our cremation rate is currently over 80%. Financially, it is the right time for East Prince Funeral Home Cooperative Limited to build our new facility and pass the savings on to our members. I would also like to mention that the facility we are construction, are constructing will be unique as it will meet the needs of the many different cultures that we serve and who are now members of our funeral home. We have created a space in this facility that families can view the process while it is happening from the family room that has been added to the plans. We will be the only funeral home here on P E I who has created a space like this for the families that we serve, and we wish to be present, and for those who wish to be present during the cremation of their loved ones. We want our facility to be a space where members will have some comfort during a very difficult time in their lives. Thank you.
Mayor Kucher, counselors, senior staff, I just wanted to add some comments to what Nancy said. For those that don't know me, I'm Gary Doucet, and I've been hired as the project manager for the crematorium during the planning and construction process through to completion. So we've been doing much research and had a lot of conversations with a lot of manufacturers of cremation retorts in Canada and the U S. We've reached out to many of the operators in P E I and in New Brunswick. We viewed different cremation retorts from, there's some that are made out of Florida and some made out of Tulsa, and it's also a Canadian-made unit out of Quebec. So we've received feedback on the specific models from the homes that are using them to find out how efficient they are and how they work. We've also asked them on the, on the selection of our model, what they thought about that in relation to what they were using. And the majority of the operators said that if they were replacing what they had, they would probably be looking at the Canadian-made version for the efficiency and the technology and the advancements they made in cremation retorts. Factors we considered were the cost, the turnkey service, including the delivery, installation and training support they provide, the reliability, innovation, energy efficiency, emission control, gas consumption, which would be for reduced greenhouse gas emissions, their ongoing maintenance and their ongoing support, which is 24/7. The cremation retort that we've chosen is manufactured by Pyrox Industries, Inc. in Quebec. It's a Canadian-owned and operated company with 45 years' experience in the manufacture, maintenance and repair of cremation equipment. All their Pyrox units are entirely designed and manufactured in Canada using C S A-approved components. The cremation retort that we've chosen is designed to operate cleaner, faster, quieter, to provide the best possible performance with superior energy efficiency, and these units meet the most stringent standards of all environmental ministries in North America. The units are fully automated. They have pollution monitoring and control program with sensors designed to automatically make corrections to the situation during the cycles. They also have an environmental smoke detector, opacity sensor, that's included as well. We'll also have a dedicated camera, which a lot of the funeral homes are doing now, and it's dedicated on the chimney stack, and it's monitored when the system is operating. We have a battery backup system as well. A generator will be installed in the new facility to ensure safety and continued operation during unforeseen power interruptions. Preventative maintenance and inspection will be completed annually. Pyrox technicians, they produce a thousand-point detailed report with supporting photos that clearly show anywhere the different components. Currently, these units are performing cremations, excuse me, in New Brunswick and P E I by having more and more of these units available, that it also reduces the cost for the maintenance because they schedule them on a, on a regular basis, so they're able to do more than one retort at a time. So it's beneficial to the operator. We've also made application for a permit to operate license with the P I Department of Environment, Energy and Climate Action, and we've been approved on that. Now, that license to operate will be issued, I'm told, once the building permit with the city is approved and not before. So we've already submitted the building permit to the city as well. When, when visiting and viewing some of these cremation retorts in the communities across P I, New Brunswick, I'd like to note that all of them were an extension of services provided by funeral homes, and most were located in residential areas in their communities. None of the operator noted any issues from the neighboring community, neighboring properties. And as noted in our application, the construction of the building will be a 45 by 50 building. It'll house a cremation retort, as well as a two garage space, family space, the office space, storage rooms and washroom. And the cremation retort will be located in an area of the building that will be restricted to authorized staff only. Our planned hours of operations will be normal business hours, 8 a.m. to 5 p.m., Monday to Friday, most likely two to four hours per day, and not necessarily every day. It will depend on the volume. That's my report, my submission to counsel. Thank you.
Any questions from counsel? Or any question? Counselor Dugle?
I, I did get a call on this. I shouldn't say a call, I got an email on it, and I believe it has been addressed. I read your project description, and it was to do basically with the pollution monitoring. And just by reading what you have here, I believe you answered the question. So I just wanted to state that I did get a call. Thanks.
I don't know who's answering the questions, but whoever wants to answer this, I guess. So currently cremations are done off-site at another funeral home, another cremation service. What currently happens?
I missed most of that question. It's hard to hear back here.
No, so currently cremations are done, like for your guys, for East Prince Funeral Home, it's cremation's done at another funeral home somewhere, like your.
No, they're done, they have been done in Kensington, and we have used other funeral homes as well.
Okay, yeah.
This is an extension of our business operation. They've made one expansion already through the life of their business, and this is a further addition to our operation.
Thank you.
Gary, is there any, like when, when the procedure's happening, is there any evidence from outside, like is there an odor or a smoke or anything?
No, that's what those sensors are for. And anything that, that I've seen in, in visiting and seeing the operation, it's minimal of any. You see heat wave, basically, is what you see from the heat coming out of the stack. And they're monitored pretty closely, and these are technologically advanced units. They've got a lot of sensors in them, and nobody's had any issues with smoke.
Anyone from the public with any questions or comments? You can answer the questions? I think they've been answered. Just state your name, if you don't mind, and address.
Yeah, my name is Todd Mouse, and I own the Prince Edward Island Crematorium in Kensington. You've probably never heard of my name because I've worked behind the scenes for many, many years. I am the one who has supported and kept the funeral homes going, why they don't have machines. You might know Peaceful Paw's Pet Crematorium, I heard that on the radio, that is also my business. We operate under the same umbrella, under the same roof. It's all different equipment, different everything for the pets and the people. I want to talk about what's going on with cremations, and before we do that, I have to give you a little history on the funeral industry in Prince Edward Island. It's the only way to get where we're at today. I grew up in a funeral home. My parents own a funeral home, so this is quite difficult for me to do today because I'm standing up here not only to protect my business, to protect islanders, I'm also fighting against my own family, okay? So this is quite difficult to do. But not all funeral homes out there are bad. There are some really good working herd people in the funeral industry, but there are some bad apples in there too. This isn't a job to me. What I do, it is my life. I grew up in the industry. I know more about the funeral homes, the funeral industry, the ins and outs than some of the people running funeral homes today. I don't have any paperwork. I don't have a license. I never chose that route. I left and I went and I started cremations because that's what I started, what I believed in. Before I purchased the crematorium in 2014, I worked there for a few years. It was owned by an individual, and it was established in 1999. It was the first crematorium ever built in P E I, and still the only private crematorium in Prince Edward Island. Since I have taken over in 2014, I have cremated my friends, I've cremated family members, I've probably cremated your mother, your father, your son, your daughter. If you had someone cremated in the last 16 years, there's a good chance I was the one that handled them and sent them off to their final place. It wasn't the funeral home. They brought the body to me, I did the cremation. I take so much care and pride in what I do. I've looked after a lot of the funeral homes here, and I've worked my ass off for years, and I've gotten zero respect from most of them. The person that opened this was just a private individual in 1999. He wasn't a funeral director, he wasn't a funeral home. He knew this facility was needed because then cremations were taken off-island to New Brunswick. So he opened this facility so funeral homes would have a local central spot to take your loved one for cremation, to keep it here in P E I. It was placed in Kensington, so it would be central, so it would be in a central location in P E I for all the funeral homes, to make it equal and fair. And it wasn't built out of profit, it was built out of need, and it was based on trust. It was put up, and the funeral homes thought it was a great idea. It was the old P E I, non-handshake, let's do it, we're gonna work together. And it worked for many, many years. The funeral industry used to get along, and I remember there used to be golf tournaments and everything else. So I grew up in the industry, watched my dad work along other people. But somewhere along the line, that has changed, and there's no more respect or care for islanders, it's all about themselves in the industry. When I purchased the facility, it was nothing more than a tiny little building, it had outdated cremation machine, it had a desk, a chair, paper and a pen. That was it, that's all I had to work with while I was trying to keep the place running with hardly any money. And at the time, there was a shortage propane when I bought the business, and propane around that time was about a dollar fifty or something like that a liter. It was a hard year, but I struggled through it because I knew we needed this for P E I. Three years ago, I asked the Funeral Service Board for a formal agreement and fair treatment because in the government eyes, I don't exist. The crematorium in P E I is nothing. It's not on paper, there's nothing there at all to support me, to protect me, to protect your loved ones. It's somehow operated for 25 years with no paperwork through the government. I requested recognition for my hard work and my independent cremations that I have been doing for the funeral homes. In order to keep doing the work I've already done for years and allow the public to come to my facility, I would have to be a licensed funeral director, an embalmer, and meet many same facility requirements as a full funeral home. That's what they want me to do in order to continue cremating your loved ones, even though I have performed over 20,000 cremations. I am the only person in Prince Edward Island that probably has this type of expertise in cremation. I know the machines inside and out, I know how they work, and all the facts that we're giving you here tonight were obviously given from the machine industry standards point of view, because they're not going to tell you what they do, that they smoke and everything else and sell it to you. They certainly do. No matter what sensors are on them, what technology they got, there's no such thing as a self-regulated cremation machine. It's not going to take care of itself, it's not going to adjust things and shut things down. It does minor adjustments, but if you're not there and you don't know what you're doing, each person is different, the weight, what they're in, the temperature outside, even if it's raining, it all affects how cremations are done. Nobody knows how to work the machinery. I guarantee there will be smoke, because even after the years of what I have done, and even though I know how to adjust the temperatures and the machine airflow and the gas, I can still get smoke on days. But I'm located in the industrial park where a cremation machine should be, away from the public. There has been instances on P E I where cremation machines have caused issues, that is documented, where fire departments have been called. Not my facility, another funeral home with a facility. So since there's no regulations, to protect this business, your loved ones will soon be forced to go to a few funeral homes ahead of machines, because if I cannot operate and continue to operate, my doors will close, and there'll be four funeral homes left in P E I that'll have full control, and you're going to see how much price cremation is then, because they're going to charge whatever they want. So in March, or three years ago, I sat down with them, and I told them I need help, because if you guys keep putting machines in, I'm not going to be able to survive. And they told me, oh, well, that's just business. If we let you deal with the public, I'm quoting verbatim, if we let you deal with the public, you could put us out of business. That tells you right there how the funeral industry works. The very people who are in the industry and who run the board are the very people who want to see my business gone. So no matter what I do, I'm in the wrong. I'm asking the government, and I have been for years, to look at my business, look at the crematorium, look at all the work that's done, look how it's kept all the funeral homes going for these years, and there should be some type of former, formal regulation to protect that business. I'm not asking for a free ride here. I'm asking for the government to step in here and put some proper regulations and licensing on the crematorium. They've done it across Canada and many other provinces where cremations, private cremations and crematoriums are done, the government has put in regulations to allow them, or the funeral industry has gotten together, and they've sat down and they've agreed to all work together. But unfortunately, in this case, in Prince Edward Island, the funeral industry wants me gone, and they want to take over and have full control because it's all about profit. It's no longer about your loved ones. My cremation prices have been low for years. I've worked seven days a week for five years straight, and I was charging $680 for cremation. That's what cremation costs you. Your bill from the funeral home was not $680, was it? $4,000, $5,000? I understand there's extra charges when you go to the funeral home, but not that much. My prices remain low also because I'm not here to rip people off on the island, and I've had certain funeral homes behind the scenes threaten me, that if I put a machine, or if I put my prices up any, they will put a machine in and put me out of business. These have been threats coming to me for years behind the scenes, and these are the people that I've kept going and that I have worked so hard for. This past March, I finally stood up for myself and my business and my fellow islanders, and I sent a respectful, five-page letter to every funeral home in this island, an olive branch, telling them how we used to get along and how this industry used to be about the people of P E I and not about how much money you can put in your pocket. That letter should have received phone calls and started a conversation, because it was a very pleasant and polite letter. Instead, it gave hate, and their backs turned on me. I was trying to tell them that I'm not here for control or profit, but I need to put my prices up in order to stay active. $680 for a cremation, propane, time, everything else, there's times I was profiting $67 in cremation, and I couldn't pay myself, all because the funeral homes are threatening to put me out of business. The silence and the hate that I was met with, and very few phone calls came out to me. There have been a few funeral homes that have remained loyal and continue using my services, but most of them have gone, and they're going to another funeral home on the island that has a machine that I once kept going. So they're taking your loved ones to a competition, or they're taking them to New Brunswick for cremation, bypassing my facility altogether. Your loved ones are going to New Brunswick instead of going to the place that's been cremating them for 25 years, all because of personal hate. Your loved ones are going to New Brunswick instead of going to the place that's been cremating them for twenty-five years, all because of personal hate from certain people. In March, the board said, and I sh- I'm sorry, I shut down my business for two weeks as well because I had nothing coming in and I needed to seek legal counsel. I needed to get a lawyer. And during that time, the board reached out to me and they want to sit down and make a formal agreement and work this out. And we did. We sat down, we discussed problems. Nothing has happened. They said they don't want to see the business go out or they don't want to see me go out of business and they don't want to see PEI crematorium go under. But yet they've had three years to fix this and work on it and no one has even made a phone call. The funeral system on PEI is extremely broken at this point. There's co-op funeral homes, there's private funeral homes, co-ops have their own boards. Nobody communicates at all. It's disorganized, it's chaotic. Some people I have met said they don't want to see this place disappear from the funeral industry. And then these same people the very next day have turned their back and I've never seen them again. They asked me what I need to keep operating and I said I need proper regulations through the government and the funeral board. And they said that could take years and it probably won't happen. So I said I need some type of protection. The funeral board themselves had told me to do up a formal agreement, send it out, give me some type of protection and paperwork. I did that and that's when ninety percent of the phone calls have stopped. That showed who I could trust. Nobody wants to sign a service agreement to keep my business going and the business that's been here for all your loved ones. But over the years, I have seen a lot of things that I shouldn't have seen behind the scenes and these are coming from the very people that you trust with your loved ones. In my facility, I've had people deliver caskets for cremation with no bodies inside and they didn't know where the body was. I have had cases come with paperwork and I've started the cremation process because I have paperwork that they give me and I do the cremation. They're, they don't allow me to look at the body or do any of that stuff. And ten minutes later, I had a frantic phone call asking if the body has been stirred it. And it was, but luckily the machine was not hot. They sent the wrong loved one. Can you imagine? Someone else getting cremated shouldn't have. These aren't my mistakes. These are mistakes that I'm finding and fixing that are coming from the funeral homes. I have had garbage in your loved ones' caskets from the funeral home, like over to their office, just thrown in there to burn and get rid of it. The disrespect I have seen is utterly disgusting. I have paperwork to sign off on pa- pacemakers or anything dangerous that goes in my machine because I'm not allowed to examine and touch the bodies. They sign off on it. I take their word. I've had several pacemakers, batteries, flashlights, you name it. I found a lot of things in my machine being cremated with loved ones. I've had damage to my machine up to forty thousand dollars because of funeral homes lying on their paperwork and I have to pay for it. It damages it quite a bit. And now, because of my service agreement and all the hard work I've done and because I'm trying to ask for fairness and protection and I'm trying to get the government to realize that an independent crematorium can exist because it does across Canada. Every province does it except PEI because the funeral board is almost self-regulated and they want me gone so they can have control. And all these mismatches with bodies and the wrong caskets and everything else, that's just from one funeral home. That's just the tip of the iceberg. And that's all from East Prince funeral home, under the management of Alice, the one that wants to put this in.
I'm just gonna interrupt you for a second here because, um, just so you have an understanding here, our goal is to look at the land use issues.
I'm telling you why the crematorium.
No, just let me finish, please, is the chair. Um, and so if you can keep your comments relative to land use matters and how that would affect neighbors. With respect to the regulation of funeral homes and co-ops, you would obviously be clearly aware that that has nothing to do with the city of Somerside. That is, those are provincially regulated. Um, and in terms of what impact this has on one business or another, um, and whether there are personal grudges and disagreements and examples of, um, all sorts of things, really that has no bearing on the land use question. So we could just try and, for the interest of time and for counsel, to try and continue to focus on the, how that may impact the land use decisions for council. Thank you.
I was just trying to inform how it would affect islanders. But it will affect the land because it is going to, it, it's gonna, it's in a bad spot. It's gonna cause a lot of smoke and emissions. The people next to it are gonna smell it. It, it's. I don't, I don't know if, if I can't read my letter about what it is, then.
The, the issue is just the reading of the letters. A lot of what you're reading has no bearing on the decision for council. So council will have, uh, to look at a, a series of factors. And, um, they all relate to land use. We, we, council will not look at whether or not there is a business relationship or a personal relationship, those kinds of things. So, um, in the interest of, uh, council's time and your time, um, your comments on the, uh, on the land use are of value. The others, uh, are probably not.
Yeah, yeah. Yep, no, the, the, put, well, then putting a crematorium there around those people, i- it is gonna smell and smoke. It takes years to understand how to work those machines and like I said, every body's different and it seems like a very, very weird spot that, uh, to allow a crematorium to go in. Anyways, I guess that's all, uh, that's all I can tell you. I just want to give you a little history on how cremation works and how the funeral industry works and maybe your loved ones aren't being treated as good as you think.
Anyone else? Either from public or council? Questions, comments? If not, uh, sorry.
One quick question, um, for the applicants here, just in relation to, um, the package. There's a project description in there and a detailed site plan. There's also an email, uh, from a Sean Ledgerwood. Is that correct? And that was sent to you, Gary? Is that, is that right? Um, is, uh, Sean, I'm going to assume, can you just tell me what Sean's position is? Because I found the first paragraph interesting. Just our policy is to not officially approve the permit until a permit required from another entity, that would be this entity, is either issued or I know it will be issued. We don't want to get in a situation where another entity feels pressured to issue a permit because we did. And can you just confirm?
Yeah, that's, that's what I mentioned in my.
Right, so Sean Ledgerwood is from the Department of Environment. So that would be a Department of Environment, a Prince Edward Island policy not to officially approve a permit until a permit required from another entity is either issued for the issues of pressure. Okay, great. Nick, that's my only question.
Yeah, uh, are these regulated by, uh, Department of Environment or anything? Because one person is saying they do have an odor or smoke and I, but, well, what I'm reading here, it's, but is, is it, it, who, who regulates that or who? If, if there's a complaint comes in from the GST center or whatever business is around there, who, who do we report that to?
Catherine McDougall.
Yeah.
There is a Funeral Services and Professions Act, so it would go through the province.
Go through the province. Okay. Thank you.
Do you wanna, do you mind stepping up to the podium? Just so people that are listening and watching online can hear your, your comments as well as, as us? And if you could just state your name for the, the minutes as well, that'd be great.
Julie Mouse, Davis Funeral Home, Kensington. The PEI embalmers and funeral directors do not control the crematorium. That if there's any problems, they answer to environment. They have to have environmental papers filled out every month. And we do not look after the crematoriums. Okay? Thank you.
Yeah, so there, as far as I understand, regulated professions to a certain degree. I used to practice in that area. And then think of the environment permits as basically a permit to pollute, right? So a permission to pollute a certain amount and, um, I forgot her name, but, um, that would be corrected. Department of Environment would be the ones responsible for overseeing, um, emissions.
There was a comment made and I'm just trying to clarify. So currently, uh, the PEI crematorium, uh, Mr. Mouse referenced, is that the only one on PEI or there's another one operating out of another, another funeral home too? Is that, is that right? Sure, sure, yeah. I just, I'm just trying to get an understanding of.
Okay, well, yes. Um, no, there's, there's, uh, uh, mine is the only private one and then there's three other funeral homes. Two have put machines in since fourteen, one put one in before fourteen and now this will be the fourth. So it'll be four funeral homes in total here shortly.
And then in other provinces, there's multiple crematoriums based on?
Uh, in other provinces, they, they have different regulations and things set up where like a, a independent crematorium like mine can still operate.
Okay.
Yeah, I have, I, it, it is possible.
Thank you. I wasn't sure whether to ask the question, but since it did come up in Mr. Mouse's comments, I did have a resident ask the question about odor. And I wasn't sure about it. I thought maybe it was just something that I wasn't, you know, really aware of. But since Mr. Mouse brought it up, I wonder would that have an impact on the residents around the area if, if there is an environmental regulation or, and I know Councilor Dron, you had asked about it as well, just a few minutes ago on odor or whatever. So I, I just want to ask it because the resident did speak to me about it and I just really wasn't sure whether I would have an opportunity to ask on it. But since Mr. Mouse brought it up, could we get some kind of an answer on that? I know we're dealing with the, you know, the public aspect of the licensing, but if that is something, like for me, I, I would like to know that.
And on, on that, I'd be curious to know if these other facilities, uh, I know the one in Kensington is in the industrial park, but I'd be curious to know if the other three, if they're in residential areas, if, if, if they have ever received comments or complaints or?
Yes, Hennessy Cutcliffe is in the city of Charlottetown, um, next to a school.
And have they, have they received, do you know any? I'm sure maybe you wouldn't be aware if it's not.
They've not had any complaints.
For, for, for terms of reference, if this was across the street, it'd be in the industrial park, right? When you think of it, like we're, it's on the edge of our current industrial park. And, yeah, so just for terms of reference, like it's not like it's.
And Belvedere is in Charlottetown as well and they have one. And then, um, Hills, um, I can't, I'm terrible. It's another cor- Hillsborough Funeral Home in Stratford. It has, uh, a, a crematorium as well, but they're not considered residential, I don't think, their area, but, um, there are homes not far from it. And in speaking with any of them, um, they've not had any complaints. We've been to Passage, which is over in, um, New Brunswick and you could throw a stone and there's a house right there and they are not having any complaints. And they, when they first started, um, a lot of the people came out and they were against it, but they've not had any issues. Once they got started, things seemed to move very smoothly for them.
Uh, I just have one more quick question, just back on the crematorium question. Um, in terms of, is there a plan for maintenance, training and operation? Gary, if that's, uh?
Yes, as, as I mentioned, the Pyrox technicians, uh, when they do their install, uh, they do an ongoing, they do training, uh, with staff and they have ongoing training support. And they have, uh, twenty, twenty-four seven, uh, online support if they need it. And the system is, uh, I would say advanced enough that, uh, they are able to sign into the system remotely. Uh, if we sense something that doesn't appear to be right, they can go in, uh, they can make adjustments. They can see what the issue might be and they can direct us accordingly on, on what we should and shouldn't do. Um, from that point forward. So the training is ongoing with them and the contact is ongoing. So, uh, we don't anticipate any issues on, on that aspect of it.
Uh, the only thi- with this, uh, has there been any public notice? Is there, like, I know Councilman Coleman, you said you had somebody reach out. I haven't had anybody mention it. Letters were sent and all that, like, nobody's here tonight other than the people that have spoke, but residents in the area are not. Yeah, okay. And gross, basically what, they were just curious? I'm, I'm curious if, like, what people in the area would be saying or if they're saying.
And this is, this is, and we got it. This is the first request, uh, within the city area to, uh, have this added within our funeral home operation. It's been in other areas and other cities and, uh, it's been proven to work. Like Nancy said, I've discussed it and with numerous operators in PEI and New Brunswick. And in the areas they're in, there hasn't been, uh, concern. We're not saying there's never smoke, but it's a controlled, uh, environment that, uh, with the system, the way it burns and the way it operates, if it's managed properly, uh, it'll be minimal if any.
I've got a really super quick one, Gary. So the unit that you're talking about, um, sorry. The unit that you're talking about, um, wanting to install, if this was to go through, are there any of those units in Charlottetown, like the unit you're talking about?
Yes, yes, yeah. Um, Hillsborough has put one in, uh, the same model and it's, uh, it's been in for, I believe, uh, one to two years. And they've had that in operation and there's been, uh, numerous updates and, and additions to the system, the way it operates, uh, since that unit's gone in. So it's, it's, it's set up to operate more efficiently.
The, my next question is for, um, CAO. Do you think it would be possible for staff? Like, how would we go about reaching out to the other, um, it was the other funeral homes in Charlottetown that had the service? Just to see if they, would that, is that something you'd be able to bring back for information? How would we go about that?
From a land use perspective, I don't know that it really applies, but I think that from a informational perspective for council, outside of the zoning piece, we could certainly provide that information perhaps.
Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, that, this, this will, this decision will not be made, uh, this evening. It, it does, just as I, as I explained earlier, um, it, it does have two more meetings. Uh, it'll come back to Planning Board on July second where we will, uh, present the report that will be, and within that report will be, you know, s- any concerns that we're able to address. And, and Planning Board on that day will, um, it will then go to council on July twenty-second, whether Planning Board, uh, votes in favor or not. It's still made, um, decision is still made by full council. And, uh, yeah, so that should be on July twenty-second, uh, sorry, twenty-first at our, at our July monthly council meeting. So with that, we will, uh, I'll hand it back over to Mayor Dan.
Thank you, Councilor Dron. Um, we'll now move to item five. So we'll take a brief pause for Councilor Morrison to step out of the room, uh, for the declared conflict. And then I will hand it back over to you, Councilor Dron. Um, quick question in terms of just tech, uh, just looking at the interest of time as well. We have a, there is a memo in the file, but it's not a part of the resolution. So I don't know if, um, that memo needs to be read into the record or not. I'm looking towards. Yeah, it, it answers questions. Sorry, this is for you, JP, I guess, CAO, just in terms of the, um, memo dated May twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-five on five thirty-five McKenzie. It does, Counselor Dron, need to read that into the record?
It's new, so yes, it should be written to the record.
Okay. Oh, Counselor Dron stepped out for a second.
There's a fairly detailed, uh, attachment to that report or to that memo. Um, I guess it's the traffic analyzer study where it's just got numbers and numbers upon numbers. That's just.
Just the meat of the, of the, of the memo is fine. And then you can reference the addendums and other elements of that.
Okay.
But since it's new, it should be read in.
Great, okay, Counselor Dron, you can get started, I think, is, thank you. Um, Counselor Cameron is here, but I think he has the memo, so Counselor Coleman, go. Someone's disappearing. We'll get started, it's gonna take you a while to go through, maybe, uh, there's Counselor Coleman. All right, let's get started and, uh, we'll get. There we are, Counselor Cameron, uh, is here, so Counselor Dron, over to you.
Okay, thank you, your worship. Um, so we will continue on with our five thirty-five McKenzie Drive zoning bylaw amendment applications. Uh, we have our resolutions this evening, but I will also read into the minutes, um, the memo from planning staff, uh, regarding this. Uh, I'll just read it all into the, uh, the record. So, uh, the background, at the planning board meeting held on May twentieth, twenty-twenty-five, questions were raised and staff were asked to provide further information. In addition to the further information requested, the planning staff have provided an explanatory note of the proposed C D A amendment. Um, so in this memo, there's just sort of five, five, five parts, so we'll just go through them here. Uh, part one is the explanatory note. Um, the request to amend section twenty-one point three B gives council the option to delegate authority to staff. It doesn't automatically happen every time. Upon review of the C D A section, staff recognized that the existing process would prove overly cumbersome and repetitive for council, staff and the applicant, uh, current and future applicants for C D A zones. By granting council the ability to delegate development authority in C D A zones to staff, they will save, uh, significant staff, council and developer slash builder time. Council will still have influence over the C D A zones. They will be required to approve plans, uses and development standards before development can begin. This will ensure that staff are following council's vision while lessening councils and staff's burden. So the resort district, five thirty-five McKenzie Drive, though these parcels were already zoned C D A, a comprehensive development plan had not been approved. This means there are no approved uses for this development and the applicant is unable to apply for a new development permit application. For further clarification, all the development to date has been reviewed and approved prior to the zoning change to C D A. Staff performed a jurisdictional scan and found there are two common methods for implementing or using C D A zones. One, the first method is to include the C D A plan specifying the uses and standards in the zoning bylaw itself. This method is transparent and gives council significant oversight over the proposed development. And two, the second method is to enter into a development agreement that specifies the uses and standards. This method will have council approve the development. However, specifics around the development standard are negotiated between staff and the developer or builder. The standards tend to mimic existing standards. For this application, the first method is being used. The proposed amendment is reflected in the bylaw itself. Including the C D A plan in the bylaw would be considered transparent as the bylaw is available to the public, whereas a development agreement is not. In reviewing the C D A standards and the application, staff recognized implementing a similar set of standards as the east-west housing corridor would suit this development best. Council will review and issue a decision on the allowable uses as well as the development standards, i.e. setbacks, building height, et cetera, within this C D A. This means if the developer changes the layout, i.e. the site plan of the development, it won't need to go to council for review and decision. It also allows for flexibility within the parcels. For example, if coastal or wetland setbacks change, then they can be integrated into the development permit process rather than having to go through the zoning amendment process. If the applicant wishes to apply for a use not listed, they will need to apply to amend the land use zone. This means the request will have to come back to council for decision and will follow the usual public meeting process. For example, let's pretend the C D A zone has been approved as is with the below uses. Uh, so, uh, permitted uses would be under residential, accessory building, townhouse, apartment building and row house. Uh, so with that hypothetical situation, currently the applicant is proposing to build an apartment building in District One. If they felt the market changed and they wanted to build a series of row houses, staff could review that development permit application and issue a decision on it. However, if the applicant wanted to build single detached dwellings in District One instead, they would need to apply for a zoning amendment to add single detached dwellings as a use. The amendment process would go through council. Uh, number two, Potter Street traffic counts. Uh, traffic counts were collected in twenty-twenty-one. The annual average daily traffic count is approximately three hundred and thirty-five compared to eight hundred and thirty-three on McKenzie Drive. And that data is, uh, the one that I referenced earlier that's attached. Uh, number three, parkland levies or dedication. Section twenty-one point eight of the zoning bylaw speaks to park levies for C D As. It only applies to residential subdivisions and explains that the usual process under the subdivision and site development bylaw applies. The definition of subdivision in the subdivision and site development bylaw has been noted below. Uh, and that is subdivision means a parcel of land that has been or will be subdivided. The parcel of land that is intended for residential use, P I D number four, four, five, nine, seven, three is an existing parcel. There is no intent to subdivide nor consolidate that parcel, thus parkland levies or dedication do not apply. If the applicant wishes to consolidate or subdivide this parcel in the future, then staff would review the park levy requirement. Number four, applying conditions, deadlines and/or penalties. The zoning bylaw does not have a mechanism to impose deadlines or penalties on zoning amendments, nor is it typically, uh, nor is it typical practice to do so. Uh, while section five point one five of the zoning bylaw states council may require a property owner enter into a development agreement with the city or any third party as applicable to fulfill any special conditions attached to a development approval. Permit or amendment, our staff are not aware of the city entering a development agreement for matters other than those related to cost sharing requests and deferment of subdivision responsibilities. And five, green fees. Green fee costs are not considered a planning matter. Typically, businesses set their rates and fees as they see fit. So with that being the memo, I will, uh, unless there's any questions or comments, we'll go into the resolutions. And seeing no lights, uh, resolution C O S twenty-five dash zero six two. Whereas an application was received from Nicole Morrison for a zoning amendment for a portion of P I D numbers seven, eight, five, three, eight, six, four, four, five, nine, seven, three, six, five, two, three, eight, eight, six, five, three, two, six and six, five, five, zero, eight, from comprehensive development area C D A zone to comprehensive development area C D A zone under the city of Summerside zoning bylaw. And whereas allowing council discretion to designate staff as the issuing authority for development permits within the comprehensive development areas, C D A, when council feels it, uh, is appropriate, will expedite and simplify the application process for all C D A applicants and allow council to apply discretion to this ability. And whereas zoning bylaw amendment zero, one, three, one, a bylaw to amend the city of Summerside zoning bylaw was read and declared as read a first time at the council meeting held on May sixth, sixth, twenty-twenty-five. And whereas in accordance with section five point seven of the zoning bylaw, council shall consider the following general criteria as applicable. Conformity with all requirements of this bylaw, conformity with the official plan, suitability of the site for the proposed development, compatibility of the proposed development with surrounding land uses, including both existing and projected uses, any comments from residents or other interested persons, adequacy of existing water, sewer, road, stormwater and electrical services, city parking and parklands for accommodating the development and any projected infrastructure requirements, impacts from the development on pedestrian or vehicular access and safety and on public safety generally, compatibility of the development with environmental, scenic and heritage resources, impacts on city finances and budgets, other matters as specified in this bylaw and other matters as considered relevant. Be it resolved that zoning amendment zero, one, three, one, a bylaw to amend the city of Summerside zoning bylaw be hereby declared as read a second time. This bears the recommendation of the planning board meeting held on May twentieth, twenty-five. Uh, zoning amendment zero, one, three, one, a bylaw to amend the city of Summerside zoning bylaw, the council of the city of Summerside under authority vested in it by section eighteen and section nineteen of the Planning Act hereby enacts as follows. Uh, zoning bylaw C S forty is amended by A, amending section twenty-one point three subsection B by adding unless council has delegated the authority to the development officer after council's approval. And B, adding the following new sections and headings after section twenty-one point two-two. Uh, and those would be, uh, resort district, five thirty-five McKenzie Drive, twenty-one point two-three. All permitted use developments within the resort district shall be subject to approval by the development officer while discretionary uses shall be referred to council for a decision. Twenty-one point two-four, application for all developments in the resort district shall be reviewed in accordance with the guidelines and standards in section five of this bylaw and Summerside official plan twenty-eighteen. Building bylaw C S thirty-one and subdivision and site development bylaw S S nineteen. Uh, and twenty-one point two-five, the area shall be divided into two resort districts identified on map twenty-one dash two as resort district number one and resort district number two as follows. And that map is attached. Under definitions, twenty-one point two-six, golf course means an area of land designed for playing golf with a series of nine or eighteen holes, each including tee, fairway and putting green and one or more natural or artificial hazards. The golf course may have accessory uses and developments that include but are not limited to a main golf club building, ancillary buildings and structures, infrastructure and related services and equipment and signage used to assist with the operation and maintenance of the golf course. Uh, under per, under permitted uses, twenty-one point two-seven, subject to bylaw requirements, the following uses shall be permitted. Uh, under residential in resort district number one, accessory building, townhouse, apartment building and row house. And under resort district number two, accessory building, duplex dwelling, apartment building, row house, duplex dwelling or semi-detached dwelling. Um, and under other, also under resort district number two, uh, accessory building, recreation facility, tourism establishment, convention facilities, restaurant, golf course, tavern, bar, lounge. Uh, development standards, the following development standards shall apply in the resort district, five thirty-five McKenzie Drive. Twenty-one point two-eight, for single detached dwellings, semi-detached dwellings, duplex dwellings, townhouse and row house, the standards of the medium density residential R three standards shall apply. A, for apartment buildings, uh, the standards of the high density residential R four standards shall apply. And B, for convention facilities, golf course, recreation facility, restaurant and tavern bar lounge, the standards shall be determined on an individual basis by the development officer. Twenty-one point two-nine, tourism establishments shall adhere to section nine point four, tourism establishments. Uh, twenty-one point three-zero, swimming pools, spas and hot tubs, A, shall be permitted as an accessory use in resort district number two and B, shall adhere to section eight point one-nine, swimming pool, spas and hot tubs. Twenty-one point three-one, notwithstanding section eight point nine, more than one main building is permitted on a lot. And that is resolution number C O S twenty-five zero six two, moved by myself and I would ask for a member of council, uh, Counselor Adams, as a seconder.
Right, thank you, Counselor. So resolution C O S twenty-five dash zero six two, moved by Counselor Dron, seconded by Counselor Adams, is on the floor. Any further comments, questions, statements from members of council?
Yeah, I think this would be probably a good time and when we would give some reasoning and explanations.
This would be, yeah, this would be the appropriate time to discuss the resolution and the subsequent resolution. They're both on there. Normally council has the fulsome discussion on the first resolution, we can do it on the second, but yeah.
Okay, so.
Counselor Dron.
Yeah, I'll start. Uh, so tonight, I am voting, uh, in favor of the resoning resolutions, uh, or, yeah, uh, tonight. Um, I know this has been a confusing times conversation in our, in our community. Um, and it is one, I think, that deserves clarity. Um, the way I see it, there's a few possible outcomes, uh, regardless of how we vote. If we vote against this, um, development might still continue, maybe at a slower pace, maybe in a more, um, piecemeal kind of way, or perhaps it won't happen at all, at least not in the near term. Um, either way, there's, um, either way, there's some uncertainty. Um, if it is approved, uh, I think those same possibilities still exist, um, except with one key difference. And that is by approving the rezoning, we give our staff a clearer, more streamlined process to work with, um, which means fewer hurdles, um, less ambiguity, better tools to manage whatever, uh, comes next. Um, and I think that matters for the sake of efficiency, um, and it matters for the sake of accountability. But beyond the logistics, I just want to mention one other thing and something that I think is just as important and something that I've been hearing a lot about from, from residents, um, and that's the feeling of being left in the dark. Um, so to, to the developer, if you, if you truly want to be part of this community, um, communication needs to be at the heart of your approach. Um, I, you've said, and I would say you, I'm, I'm just addressing the, whether it's a representative or the developer themselves. Um, you've said you wanted to contribute to Summerside and that is welcome. Um, but I think contribution requires trust and trust requires transparency. So, um, if you want the public to buy into your vision, especially those who live near or, or who visit on the boardwalk daily, um, who see it every day, you need to be open, not defensive, not vague, but honest and forthcoming. Um, in many ways, I think this affects us all, whether we're neighbors or, or boardwalk users. So my, my ask tonight is simple, communicate clearly, regularly and respectfully. So, yes, I'm supporting this rezoning because I believe it's the right step forward from a planning and procedural perspective, but I'm also calling for a reset in how we, uh, engage each other. So I'm a yay, but I'm gonna watch how things work out.
Counselor Cameron and then Counselor Dron.
Thank you, your worship. Um, I would echo most of those points that you have made. Um, I have said a few times that I think the way to make this development, uh, a little bit better received is to be a little bit more transparent with the public. I think that that is very important. I think there's a lot of people out there who have a lot of questions that don't necessarily always get answered. I think there's a lot of answers that came from this, uh, rezoning. Uh, but I think that there's still a lot of answers that, questions that need answers, so I one hundred percent agree with that. Uh, another thing that I kind of picked up on, excuse me, on the last few meetings, and I'll speak for myself, is that uh, there are, a lot of decisions were being based on, um, a timeframe. And I don't think that it is fair to, um, I don't, it's not really a punishment, but to, to, to slow someone down when we, as a council, have not stipulated any timeframes that people can operate under. Uh, if we want people to operate under a quicker timeframe, that is for us to decide and us to put forward. If that's something that we want going forward, we should do that, but we cannot hold someone to a different standard just because they are taking a lot, a lot longer, uh, than most people would. That is their project, they are entitled to do so. Uh, so for me, taking that out of the equation and I look at the criteria of what we need and I think that this, uh, development is very suitable for the area because it meets all the criteria, uh, that we are supposed to base, um, our decisions on.
Yeah, thank you, your worship, and I echo a lot of those comments and I, I will be supporting it. And I have supported this, uh, along the way over the years and I've been disappointed a lot of times too. But I feel that, uh, this is a reset, it needs to be a reset and I hope Mr. Lou sees that. Uh, I think there's a great opportunity for Summerside and area to have a golf course, which is badly needed. And, uh, you know, an eighteen and a nine, uh, is, is something that, uh, you know, and I hear them working out there every morning and I really think this time that is, I, I believe this time it's gonna happen. I really hope it happens and I, 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 uh, I hope that I'm not disappointed this time and, and I, for some reason. I, for some reason, I kind of think I'm not going to be. So, I, I, I will be supporting this.
Any other further comments from council? Councilor McCollum?
I do. I won't be supporting the project, and this has no disrespect to the developer or the applicant or Ms. Morrison. I am very strongly feeling convictions, and somebody has to speak to it. Twenty years is a long time, and we can say different things, we can whatever we want, but we also have to learn lessons. And I'm saying that I've learned a very valuable lesson. I wasn't here at the beginning of this in two thousand and five, but I have been every year since. And for me, I'm looking at a couple of things here from members of council. In section E, it says, "Any comments from residents or other interested persons." Well, I can't speak for any of you, but I know that I have heard from many residents who are concerned. I've heard from business people, I've heard from people that have waited to see. I have heard from people that have used the second-oldest golf course on PEI only to have it closed, and that they could use it if they could bring their own golf carts. I have seen it when former Mayor Bill was here and a beautiful restaurant opened, and then within a four-to-six-month period, it was closed. Again, people were disappointed. Whose fault was that? We had great hopes, and we were very supportive as a community and as a council, and I would want nothing more but to see this development operating and tourism and economic development and jobs and suppliers being supported by this development, but they're not, to my knowledge. In the other part, and I know there's whispering going on, but I'm still going to make my point. Members of councils, comments that were given for reviewing amendments, in section I, it says, "Impacts on city's finances and budgets." Well, we've waited for twenty years to see some of that increase to our economic development, and we've waited, and we've watched, and we've gone to plan meetings for tours, but we haven't seen anything change. Councilor Duran has mentioned about communication. We've wanted communication, but that communication hasn't happened. So, I feel that we're doing something or agreeing to something, but we don't have anything in writing to say that this is going to be met by a certain period of time. We don't have any, any recourse to stand that ground. And I think as a municipality, it's really important that we set our example, we set our standards and our guidelines, and we follow them. And I don't see that happening, and I know I'm not going to be here in another twenty years, and I don't think any one of you are. So, the thing is, we need to put our words on the things that we stand for, and I stand on that we can't go on promises that we don't know if they're going to be met or not. And too many people have been waiting and watching, and they're very concerned, and so are other businesses. We've lost very important impact with golfing tournaments, we've lost some very mainstay golf tournaments because of that golf course being closed. So, that's where I stand. And my final point, K, it says that other matters as considered relevant. Well, what's relevant to me is, I think Mr. Lou has some fantastic, amazing ideas, but you know what? Mr. Lou didn't vote for me. The residents of Summerside voted for me, and they are counting on us to be their voice, whatever that voice is. My voice tonight is, I'm saying, I want to see something concrete, I want to see some timelines, and I want to stop dancing around this little issue or that little issue. We haven't seen anything arrive that we've been told, such as a golf course, a resort that was supposed to be opened. We've heard of a daycare, we have heard of a number of different things, but they have not happened. And I don't feel that I'm comfortable saying yes to something that isn't written out more clearly. So, I won't be voting for it.
Thank you, Councilor. Any further comments from members of council? And we still have Ken there, Councilor Trentholm, if, if you're there as well.
Yes, I'm still here.
Okay. I see no other lights on here. Councilor Trentholm, do you have anything?
Sure. Thank you.
Go ahead.
And, and I guess, and Sarah, you got to walk with me along this tightrope. I'm struggling, and honestly, right now, I don't know where my, I don't know where my vote would go. So, I have a couple items that I think would add some clarity for myself. If I put my community service and tourism hat on, I can look at what is needed and what I've been told at the door. Like a golf course, wonderful, I think, for tourism. I've had some, some positive responses from some residents in terms of what this can offer. The challenge is when I look at, when I look at some of the details which we're compelled to, if I look at conformity of all the requirements of this bylaw, I do, I am really confused why a city-owned property is included in this application. I know it's been explained. However, this property, zoning it, it's already zoned CDA, but including it as this would mean that by us voting yes, it would mean that accessory buildings, apartment buildings, row houses, and townhouses can go in the city zoned and owned, sorry, the city-owned property. It really does not make sense to me, and I, I, I think the, I think the intent from a city's point of view, how I'm understanding it, is that the city, it will remain with trees, natural environment, and preserve whatever wildlife we can within that environment. That is my understanding. However, that understanding would not be consistent if we turn it, if we approve this going into city land, being considered this. So, I would just like to put on this aspect, just put a motion on the floor just to amend the proposed amendment to removing PID three five five oh eight from these proposed amendments. So, I wonder if there's a secondor.
There does not appear to be a secondor, Councilor Trentholm. I think on the matter of the city property within the CDA that was explained and discussed at the last meeting in detail. But I don't know if you can, what other mic is on?
It's hard to make out what he's saying.
Yeah, so he's asked for an amendment to remove the City of Summerside-owned PID, which I think is to do with the right-of-way, which is a right-of-way piece there. So, I don't think that, if I'm, again, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Seid or Rosie, but I think the feedback from staff at the last meeting was that the right-of-way wouldn't be affected in, in any way.
Correct.
And so, Councilor Trentholm, sorry, I've not seen a secondor here.
Okay, perfect. No, no, that's, that's good. The, the other issue in terms of the amendment, and I appreciate everybody staying with me, and I'm sorry you can't probably hear me as well, I'll try to be a little louder and talk slower maybe. Whereas the amendment's looking that, on council's review, so council can, we're twenty-three point three, sorry, twenty-one point three, is that unless council has delegated the authority to the development officer, so the way the, whereas reads, it's talking that when council feels it's appropriate to expedite and simplify the application process, I just have three issues with that, I guess. The first is that this was not a request from the developer, so all of this development can still happen without that being included. My other comment is, whenever council feels it's appropriate, I, I think that if you're looking at giving the right amount of checks and balances, I think it seems a little open-ended to me. I'm not sure what the process would be, that would look like. And the third point is, when we do that, decisions to limit community feedback, or even council involvement, really should be taken with great care. In my mind, I'd like to see this come back to council, and city of this amendment would make sense and to have a great dialogue. I, I see value in the residents hearing the feedback, I see value in hearing staff, but I think just because it's come to council in this manner, I'm at a place where I don't, I, I would rather have that candid conversations, I guess, as opposed to voting on the proposed amendment, that I'm not one-hundred percent clear how that's going to play out in practice. So, in my mind, I'll, I'll throw out another balancing act here, I'll just put a motion on the floor that to amend this section twenty-one point three by taking out the aspect that, I guess, giving, delegating that authority to staff, the development officer.
Hey, Councilor, I'm going to, again, the echo. Councilor, again, I'm going to see if there's a secondor, and if there is, then we will proceed to get some particulars with respect to what specifically you're going to request. Councilor Duran?
I'm just wanting to clarify something. The twenty-one point three I have here is swimming pools, spas, and hot tubs. Like, under development standards.
Oh, sure, sure. It's, um, yeah.
Twenty-one point two-three?
Yeah.
Okay. Just want to make sure I'm looking at the right section.
I think Councilor Trentholm is referring to item I under Schedule A, right, this is amending section twenty-one point three subsection B by adding unless council has delegated the authority to the development officer after council's approval, I think. And again, I want to make sure we have a secondor, but I think the council is proposing to strike that section.
That would be correct.
Which is, again, Councilor Trentholm, I don't see a secondor for the motion to...
Seconded.
Okay, Councilor McCollum has seconded. Okay. Thank you, Councilor McCollum. So, Councilor Trentholm, and Councilor McCollum, the, you're going to have to explain to me the amendment, and then we're going to have to figure it out, the proposed amendment.
Sure. So, the amendment change would be removing, I believe where it starts, A, amending section twenty-one point three subsection B by adding, so you're removing unless council has delegated the authority, an officer, after council's approval, so. So, basically deleting unless council has delegated the authority to the development officer.
That's all. Sorry, Councilor McCollum, the question was, who would the authority get delegated to? Would it stay with council? For Councilor Trentholm as well, I think you would then also, I would suggest that you also consider the second paragraph, the and where, as allowing council, that completes in allow council to apply discretion to this ability, just, I guess maybe you don't need to. Okay, maybe you don't need to, you, you decide. So, the amendment on the floor, as I understand it, is with respect to, under resolution COS twenty-five dash zero six-two, the proposed amendment under Schedule A of the zoning amendment zero one three one, part one, A, would be struck from the resolution, so the words "amending section twenty-one point three subsection B by adding unless council has delegated the authority to development officer after council's approval." Is that correct, Councilor Trentholm? That is removed?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Brian, do you have that, at least, from a...
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, Councilor Adams, the question.
So, what's the purpose of removing it? Like, why? Why, why remove it?
Councilor Trentholm, if you have a question, the question is, why would you want to remove it? What's the purpose of the amendment? Sorry, that's more proper words.
Sure, sure. I think in terms of, I, I would like a more fulsome conversation on that with, with staff and council. Yeah, I just, I think in terms of the, the three reasons, when it's looking at having community feedback and council involvement, and as the whereas statement in the, I'm, sorry, this would also be the whereas if we're looking at, it's the second paragraph on the by of the resolution, so as we're allowing, as allowing council discretion to designate, it's when we're looking at when council feels it is appropriate, so. I, I would look for more of a process. What does that mean? What's appropriate to one counselor, might not be for the other? So, what does that look like in practice? That's what I would like to see. I'm just not seeing it.
Councilor McCollum?
I'll just add from my perspective on, on it. I believe we had an email from one of the residents, Ms. Cameron, who is a lawyer, and she made the point about having a decision made based on, say, a PID number, and, and that would be done by staff and not council. And so, for me, I'm tying in with what Councilor Trentholm is saying, that to have that fulsome discussion with council, if we hear any residents' comments or whatever, it just gives a more open debate on it instead of seeing it go through a PID number and council has no decision on it, from the last meeting.
Yes, and the effect of the, the proposed amendments, we understand, would be the council would not be delegating their authority to staff, but would be retaining their authority under twenty-one three.
What is it, what Councilor Trentholm is saying is that council should be on that? That council should be involved on that?
Yeah, I think that, that's what, that's the point.
And not the, not the officer?
The council would not be delegating that authority, but we're retaining its approval. And that would, would be the, okay, so we've got the, Brian, you have that written down as well, so. Councilor Duran, speaking to the proposed amendment.
Yeah, just, so, like, staff, staff work within the policies that council has laid out for them, and it's almost like if we remove that line, it almost gives the impression that we don't trust our staff.
The Councilor McCollum and the Councilor Bush.
I trust our staff one-hundred percent, but our staff are not voted by the, the residents of the community. We are. We are the voice of the residents. So, that's why I think we should be there.
But staff are carrying out our directions under those guidelines.
But sometimes we need to have that fulsome debate to get all of those questions out on the floor that residents are asking us, and if there's no communication back and forth, then that fulsome communication isn't happening.
And I, and I know for myself, it's not, it's certainly not an issue of not trusting, I definitely trust what staff are providing.
I trust.
But, but I think it's, again, it's looking at, yeah, I, I guess, having more time to consider all of this, it doesn't mean this doesn't come back to the table. I think just being able to make a decision on the development and then being able to make a decision on this, I, I, I view them as two separate entities, and I think just, can we just focus it on the development? Then we can look at this at some, at some point later in time. That, that's where my head is, but...
Thank you, Councilor Trentholm. I know you can't see the lights here, so I'll try and, when you do want to speak, just say, "Can I speak?", and then we'll, we'll line you up with the lights, okay? Counselors, no.
Thank you, Worship. So, I think the amendment's sort of speaking to, in the memo, staff give an example of when they are going to make those decisions and when they're not. And when they make the decisions, it is based on, to Councilor Duran's point, rules and guidelines that we as a council have already set in place, so permitted use, uses under District One. If it doesn't fall in there as a permitted use, it says they would need to apply for a zoning amendment to add single detached dwellings as a use, that amendment process would come through council. So, in theory, it, it is doing exactly what we're looking to do without having to do it, based on how I read this memo. So, I, I, I think there's already, as long as we are happy with the permitted uses we have in each of the districts, I don't know why we would, I, I think, to be honest, I think quite frankly, all far too often, a lot of stuff come to council and we make probably poor decisions based on a small portion feedback that we feel is going to negatively impact us in the next election, and, and I don't think that's right as a council to make those decisions. Our, our decisions are based on... Our decisions are based on what's best for the community. And I'm not talking about this singular decision on this, but just in general. And I really always find that's a fine line in why we make decisions. So I think from reading this memo that staff provided, I think if there's any changes that are not under the already permitted uses, it would have to come back to council for approval anyway. So that gives me enough satisfaction that we do have a say in anything we have not already decided upon in regards to our permitted uses. Hopefully that made sense.
Thank you, Counselor Snow. Any other further comments on the proposed amendment? Seeing none, so I'll call for a vote on that. So we had a motion to approve, to propose an amendment to Resolution COS twenty-five dash zero six two by Schedule A, by striking one, sub one A, the, starting with amending Section twenty-one point three, dot, 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 until after council's approval. Moved by Councilor Trenholm, seconded by Councilor McCollman. All in favor, this is on the amendment only, all in favor of the amendment, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The amendment is defeated. So now we will continue with the discussion on the Resolution COS twenty-five dash zero six two. So the floor remains open to council for further comments. Councilor Trenholm, you were the last one to speak. If you wish to continue, you may.
Yeah, I just have one, just have one, so. And I just asked, I guess, I did send an email with a document, with an image, so I just moved the other document, I sent the email, be received and placed on the file.
Thank you, Councilor Trenholm. I think that this was on my desk when I arrived, is it on everyone else's desk as well? So there's two ways to do this. We can go through the formal process, or council can just receive the document by friendly reception and place it on the file, which would be the normal course, but. I'll only ask any council member not want to receive the document in front of you, and it appears to be a image of the subject property with a red line drawn around it.
I don't mind receiving the document. If there's some sort of explanation, I don't.
I think we're going to get to that part for Counselor Snow, first we have to receive the document, and then we'll get the explanation. Maybe that's sort of the teaser.
Receive it, then could I get an explanation?
Okay, so we can provide a copy there to Brian, so that can go on the record. Councilor Trenholm, you can continue there.
Excellent point, Deputy Mayor Snow, appreciate that. Does your, does your image also have a link? I think, I think it does, but I want to make sure I sent the correct source. But this is essentially the PEI Department of Environment, Energy, and Climate Mapping Action Tool, so I did jump on there just to try to make sense. I know we've headed to council a number of times that we, we, some of council, I think, are just struggling with, do we approve an item before an environmental scan? Or do we do it after? But I think that practice has been, we do it before. And so I just, I pulled up this mapping tool just to illustrate that the area in red, that's the zone that's before council right here, and the green, that's highlighted within that, is wetlands, and the dark green is the buffer. So, when I'm looking at that, and I roughly did a calculation using the mapping tool and distance and octagons and triangles and everything like this, but the total acres, we're saying that the total acres is around a hundred and four, but fifty-four of those acres, by my measurements, I mean, no, I guess it's not official, but come to fifty-four acres. So fifty-four acres of what the developer is looking to develop appears to be, by this mapping software, wetlands. So I think if there was ever a time where we'd say, "Let's, let's get the environmental assessment done first," because much of what the developer has proposed in their application has been to take place on these, identify wetlands, I don't want to be short of saying by the mapping, it's not by the department, I guess, but by the mapping software. So, I guess just to make that point, that I don't, that I would be more comfortable to, to table this bylaw until we had the environmental assessment of the area. But I don't, I know that's not how we usually do things, but I guess I could just leave it there. I.
Okay, Councilor Trenholm, just so, you said some words there that require me to ask you some questions about. So you said you want to table the which? Did you say?
In my mind.
So you're, you, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, 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 in my mind, it makes, for me, it makes sense when over, when over fifty percent of the land, by this mapping tool, is designated wetlands, I think we would owe it to ourselves as councillors to table this resolution, sorry.
Yeah, Counselor, I'm going to cut you off again, because it's a pretty specific question. Are you making a motion to table or not? You're saying we should, we should think about it, you know, decide whether you want to do it or not. Because if you do, then, then, just so you know, for the rules of procedure, we've gone through this before. If you do make a motion to table, you'll need a secondary, and there will be no further discussion on that until there is a vote taken. If council decides to table the motion, then that's it on the discussion and debate for the night until it comes back. It's the echo, Counselor Cameron, it's not you, is it? No. Okay, thanks. It's our, it's worse with the, with the other joining in. So, Councilor Trenholm, again, question two, are you making a motion to table Resolution COS twenty-five dash six two? Or not, just so we know? Because I don't want to get us into a discussion about tabling, because when a motion, when there's a motion to table, the discussion is end.
Okay, well, maybe I'll hang, I'll hang on, I'll hang on to that idea until I can hear. Make sure everyone else has a chance to talk.
Okay, that's fine. Counselor Cameron has his light on, so hold on to Counselor Cameron, Counselor.
I am almost positive, and perhaps we can speak to the representative of the developer, but the environmental stuff has already been dealt with through the province, I believe. So I don't, I mean, you can proceed if you want, but I, from my understanding, is that portion has already been completed, so I don't know why we would table this based on waiting for an environmental assessment when it's already been completed. If that's appropriate for the representative to.
Yeah, I think the questions were asked at the last meeting, that if there was a permit issued, and we did have in the last application, it seems to be a policy of Department of Environment to issue a permit after another entity is, but perhaps this is because we're dealing with part of it in link letter or not. But certainly if council wants to ask a question to the applicant, council can do so.
I would like to ask.
All right, Counselor Cameron, the question to the applicant, I think the applicant is here. Nicole, you're the applicant, right? You're not required to answer the question, but you can ask the question, whether you want to ask.
The environmental has been dealt with. It was two years that slowed down our project because we were waiting for environmental. We got through that, we compensated what we needed to compensate the wetlands, and we're now moving forward, and everything's approved by, and we have a permit from the government.
Great, thank you. Any further comments, questions, statements from members of council on the resolution on the floor? Nope, seeing none, hearing none. So now we'll move on to the vote. With respect to Resolution COS twenty-five dash zero six two, moved by Councilor Trenholm, seconded by Councilor Adams. I'll call for a vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? We have the ayes have it, and so we'll move on to the next resolution. Counselor Trenholm, but in terms of the vote, Councilor Trenholm, we did not hear you. I've got Councilor McCollman as a nay, the others all as ayes.
I voted aye.
Okay, and also with the ayes, so the ayes have it by, count everybody here, five, one. Yeah, that's okay. It has.
So this vote that we're taking, is it for the amendment or the overall project?
Yeah, so the vote was for the overall project, first vote was for the amendment. We'll now move to the next resolution on the same matter, and I'll hand it over to Councilor Trenholm to read it and counsel it.
Resolution COS twenty-five dash zero six three, whereas an application was received from Nicole Morrison for a zoning amendment for a portion of PID number seven-eight-five-three-eight-six, four-four-five-nine-seven-three, six-five-two-three-eight-eight, six-five-three-two-six, and six-five-five-zero-eight, from comprehensive development area CDA zone to comprehensive development area CDA zone under the City of Summerside zoning bylaw. And whereas zoning bylaw amendment zero-one-three-one, a bylaw to amend the City of Summerside zoning bylaw, was read and declared as read at two separate meetings of council held on different days, be it resolved that zoning bylaw amendment zero-one-three-one, a bylaw to amend the City of Summerside zoning bylaw be hereby formally adopted. And that was moved by myself, and I would ask for a secondary from council, Counselor Cameron.
Thank you, Counselor. Resolution COS twenty-five dash zero six three, moved by Councilor Trenholm, seconded by Councilor Cameron, is on the floor. Further comments, questions, statements from members of council? Hearing and seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it with one nay. And with that, we move on to the next resolution. All right, we're through that AMB. Yeah, we can go find Rick from wherever he hides. Thank you, council. And we're just taking, if anyone joining us here, we're just taking a brief break. Well, we have one council return. Welcome back, Rick. We missed you. Yeah. Your mic's off, so it's not on the record. All right, we're moving on. So we are at Resolution COS twenty-five dash zero six four, and I will ask Counselor McDougal, Chair of Finance, to read the resolution and introduce it to council.
Thank you, your worship. I have a motion here, COS two-five-zero dash zero six four, moved by myself and seconded by Deputy Mayor Snow. Whereas Section A of the building bylaw CS dash three-one outlines building permit fees and Section one thirty-five of the Municipal Government Act authorizes council to alter fees set out in the schedule due to a bylaw by resolution. And whereas a review of the building permit fees was conducted as part of the twenty-twenty-five-twenty-six budget deliberations, and this review identified that other municipalities charge between five and nine dollars per thousand dollars of construction value. And whereas it was determined that the building permit fee for construction should be changed from three dollars to five dollars per one thousand dollars of construction value for both residential and commercial construction, this fee still being the lowest in our jurisdiction. Be it resolved that council approves an amendment to Section A of the building bylaw CS dash three-one to revise the building permit fee for a construction from three dollars to five dollars per thousand dollars of construction value, minimum fee of twenty-five dollars, applicable to all residential and commercial construction. This resolution was made upon the recommendation of the Finance Committee meeting held on May twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you, Counselor. And you moved it and it was seconded by Deputy Mayor Snow. Great, Resolution COS twenty-five dash zero six four, moved by Counselor McDougal, seconded by Deputy Mayor Snow, was on the floor. Any further comments, statements from members of council? Seeing and hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, the ayes have it by, the ayes have it, there we go. On to the next. Resolution COS twenty-five dash zero six five, Counselor Trenholm, Chair of Planning Board, Counselor.
Resolution COS twenty-five dash zero six five, whereas John McKinnon is requesting council approval in accordance with Section thirteen of the Licensing Bylaw, CS twenty-one, to operate a mobile sales establishment, Flying Beaver, at two-seventy-two All-Weather Highway. Highcroft Farms, Inc., is the property owner. And whereas Section thirteen of the Licensing Bylaw provides that council shall allow or refuse an application based on the following considerations. There's an airplane called a Flying Beaver. Safety, desirability, impact on established businesses in the city, public convenience, and such other considerations as it deems appropriate. Be it resolved that council grant approval to John McKinnon to operate a mobile sales establishment, Flying Beaver, it should be Flying Beaver. It's mistyped in the second, it does say flying, but it should be frying. Anyway, it is Flying Beaver, and there is a plane called the Flying Beaver. At two-seventy-two All-Weather Highway, Highcroft Farms, Inc., property owner, the license is subject to the following conditions. Paying a license fee of five hundred dollars for a local business as per Licensing Bylaw CS twenty-one regulations. A food health permit is approved by the province. Litter disposal containers are provided on-site. Hours and days of operation are seven a.m. to eight p.m. daily. Letter or letters of permission from property owner or owners for a proposed location. In connection of any pipe, hose, et cetera, to the city system requires city approval. This bears the recommendation of the Planning Board meeting of June third, twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you, Counselor Trenholm, moved by yourself and seconded by?
I would ask for Counselor Snow.
Counselor Snow?
Deputy Mayor Snow.
Deputy Mayor Snow, so both. Resolution COS twenty-five dash zero six five, moved by Counselor Trenholm, seconded by Deputy Mayor Snow, was on the floor. Further comments, questions, statements from members of council? Hearing and seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? None, the resolution is carried. Counselor Trenholm, over to you. Sorry, Counselor Adams, I didn't even look at which one it was, we were taking very long. Counselor Adams, over to you.
Whereas street parking on both sides of McEwen Road in the school zones have become a safety concern, be it resolved that Appendix A of CS dash twenty-seven Traffic and Parking Bylaw be updated so that both sides of the street of McEwen Road in the school zones of Three Oaks Senior High and Athena School become no parking zones. This bears the recommendation of the committee of the whole meeting of June sixth, twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you, Counselor Adams. Resolution COS twenty-five dash zero six six, moved by Counselor Adams, seconded by Counselor Morrison, was on the floor. Further comments, statements, questions from members of council? Seeing and hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution is carried. Thank you, council. With that, we will take a brief five-minute recess. It is eight-thirty-one, so it's be back here by eight-forty to move in.